Okay, we're going to get started. You good? Okay. It's November 2nd, 2022. I can't believe it's already November. It seems like time is flying by really fast. So the time is 4:02 PM. In attendance, Director Jorgensen, Director Art, Director Daniels, Director Nelson, Director Malpakam. I expect, is Director Bankas here? Okay, Director Bankas is here and she will be joining us. Director Loma is not available today and he's on excused absence. We also have Superintendent Gall and several of his administrative team here. So, thanks all of you for joining us. The first item, actually when I looked at the board agenda, the first item was the school USIPs, but when talking to Superintendent Gall, he wanted to first address the realignment topic first as that would be a shorter conversation and then move the rest of the conversation on the agenda. So, the first item on the agenda today that we are going to be talking about is going to be the central admin realignment conversation. And I'm going to turn that over to you, so.
Great, thank you, Zou. I get the ability to drive. I'll just sit right next to you. Okay. Good evening, board members, community, particularly staff. I just wanted to give you all an info update. This is a non-action item, but in transparency and certainly after my fourth month being able to share where it is that we feel that we need to make some mini no-cost realimements of reporting in staff to make sure that we can deliver on our coherence alignment. So I reiterate, no cost. So I just want to make sure that the folks understand. This comes from a couple of different sources. This is first from my observations, but as well as you've heard me say publicly before, I want to acknowledge the strong work of interim and former Superintendent Dr. Nick Glennich and Mary Thurman's work in bringing in the PCG report as it has helped inform where some challenges existed within the district that will help us get to the level of deliverable. And so the first report that we had talked about was, came from Human Resources. And really what it said was that there was a major focal opportunity for improvement and just making sure that we do the best hiring and onboarding possible. We have been late to hire, slow to hire, last to hire in comparison to many of our districts. And the feedback that had come, although always well-intentioned was the work under Chief Bailey and within Personnel Support Services, that HR was holding us back on our ability to reach our goals. Again, we have done extraordinary work in being at the staffing level that we are at. I will say that a lot of the feedback was just that we were working much harder than we have to to be able to get there. So how do we work smarter than just harder? Coherence and alignment on all things instruction. Other things, you'll notice that when I came onboard, I got rid of different levels of, there are no assistant superintendents, no associate superintendents, no deputy superintendents. There are all just chiefs. And so we renamed ALL, the Chief Academic Office. And within Chief Academic Office should be all things instruction. And we'll discuss that a little bit. On this idea of area superintendents expanding and embedding coaching practices within their body of work, that has already happened. And we are super excited in having direct coaching assets already available to area superintendents. And then this idea of expanding on what is it and how is it that we communicate? Communication is not just our relationship with the media. Communication is every relationship that we have with a stakeholder. And so you'll see how I expand, hope to be able to expand and accelerate our community and partnerships through our communications department. So I'm going to go through these, just kind of the same format. You'll see a why and then you'll see the current structure and then the structure that we'll be moving to. The timeline for these changes will be after Thanksgiving. None of these require any substantial physical changes. So again, there's no retrofitting. The soft conversations have already happened with both chiefs and with direct reports. And everybody sees the reasons for it and is head nodding in the right direction. So again, going back to HR, I wanted to get focused to ensure that we are the best as possible at hiring and onboarding. So it's not just getting focus and taking some other position reports away from Personnel Support Services. We're actually realigning and bringing benefits directly in to Personnel Support Services. So it sits right next to and with HR. So we do a lot of over-the-wall tossing in our processes of bringing people onboard. So in an effort to streamline that, why not have benefits right next to the people that are doing the hiring? And then that, as I said earlier, the breadth of supervision was just a little too spread out and not quite focused. And so in here, you'll see that the changes that we'll be making is if I go from right to left, the big one that you will notice and you may agree with or not, is that we felt that PD, specifically because most of our PD is teacher and instructional focused, should be under the CAO and not under Personnel Support Services. And then the other change here is that Luann de Cleveux and Community Engagement, the D11 Engage, would then go under the Communications Department under Deborah Ashby to be able to accelerate that and make it what I like to think of as a full circle. It's not aligned to the partner. It's how do I tie the partner all the way back to the mission that we do? And so then the proposed new structure for Chief Bailey gives her just a little bit more focus by bringing in benefits and having that right next to HR. And it moves, like I said earlier, PD and D11 to places where I think that they're better aligned. I'm going to go through, there's only a couple more slides and then I'll open up for questions. Our CAO office, Chief Academic Officer, all things instruction, teaching and learning. Our lever of change this year is doubling down that if we can improve the quality of instruction at the first pass of children, we will increase academic achievement for all children. That will in turn increase our enrollment as a lagging indicator, but we are doubled down on the work and you will see the depth of that when Chief Asavedo goes through and leads the continuous improvement cycle. I was very surprised when I joined the team to see that professional development was not in what was ALL. And I think that's because at the time, ALL also had running of schools. And so it was more about school operations. We've built this team now to have a separate schools division, which reports to me directly as a superintendent, and then have all things happening instruction specifically under Tamra's work. And in her body of work, you'll see that, and you've already heard me beating the drum of early education, we're going to elevate up the, what the Director of Early Education, Sarah Carlson, out from underneath Special Ed to be a direct report to Tamra because of the high focus on it. It doesn't need a layer. She's spending so much time there. And so this is currently the structure for Tamra. And then the addition would be two more direct reports. We do see that this is a potential increase in span of control that can be challenging, but we also believe that there's an opportunity going into next year to kind of bucket some of these direct reports and perhaps have a special populations division as well as a professional developmental division and a curriculum and instruction division. But we'll hold that for further. I was fine with keeping this at eight direct reports for Tamra. She's an experienced, already proven deputy superintendent from a much larger system. So really, the big takeaway on this is PD comes to the CAO and we're going to make Early Ed its own director position. Get it out from underneath Special Ed. The final piece is D11 Engage to join Deborah's team in communications. I could not be happier with the number and quality of partnerships that we have through D11 Engage. It just is a straight line right now and I needed to be a circle. And in order to get it to be a circle, I need it to be managed by Deborah, who is managing that cyclic way of how we're getting, giving, and correcting our own message to the community that we engage with. And so this could be a real accelerator for us because community, the D11 Engage team and the community partnerships that Luann manages are so differentiated and spread across the city. It could really be a great message multiplier for us. And so this is Deborah's current team. And then this adds Luann de Cleveux to her team there. And I should let everyone know, this is Luann's last year. She's in her retirement transition year. So again, having this close to Deborah, as we think about a new staffing for that opportunity, we'll get that even tighter to how it is that our messaging can be full circle through our community and not just push the way it can be seen sometimes. So I'm going to pause there. Any questions?
So thank you. Do we have a copy of this report? Marsala has it.
I will get it sent.
Could you load it on boot docs so people are?
Yes.
If they want to look at it? Okay. With that, questions from the board on what was presented? Makes sense to me. Any comments, questions, anything?
So we just need to keep updating these as we come to meetings and keep everybody straight.
We'll get a complete updated set. And this is the only proposed org changes for the remainder of the year. So it's not a moving target. This is what we want to be lock and loaded to come into the spring semester as we return from the holiday break to make sure that we are completely aligned on the strategies that you all will now see in the UIP and the continuous improvement briefing about ready to come.
And it makes sense to me with the realignment under Academic Officer to do professional development in that line so that it's unified in the focus in which those things, the scant amount of time that we have available to us is aligned to where it is that we want to go. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. So if we can also put the new organizational charts on the District 11 meeting?
Yeah, we'll post those as soon as we're completed. And I said coming back from Thanksgiving is when we'll bring this into full action. Because we have to then do all the direct report changes and move all those evals over and all that stuff.
Okay. And everybody on the team is aware of it, the professional development team, all of them have been informed, so this is not a surprise to them.
That is correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate that. And like what Director Bankas said, it looks like it aligns much better now, the professional development. ALL group, so if our emphasis is going to be best-first instruction, then it makes sense to move that under Tamra, Miss Asavedo, Chief Asavedo, so.
Three names.
Yep. So she can provide the requisite professional development for our staff in best-first instruction. So now that we covered that one, we'll circle back to the top of the meeting and that would be the Unified Improvement Plan. And there are two schools that we are going to hear today and those are going to be Audubon and Martinez. This is part of the review process that the board, we're doing for the past several weeks. We've been discussing this at board meetings as non-action items so far. But today, we had an opening in the work session where we didn't have significant other topics on it. So we had some time out there. So that's why we moved two schools to this work session out there. And I appreciate some of the staff members are doing the heavy lift in the last minute and posting the necessary updates and documentation to boot docs. So after these two schools, we still have five schools left. And those five schools are Mann, Swigert, West Middle, Twain, and Pendles. And we will try to fit in all those five schools by the end of this month. So on December 14th, at that board meeting, we will get all the school improvement plan as action items and we can approve all the school improvement plans at that point in time. Okay? With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Gall. I guess we are going to talk about Audubon first and I see the principal out there.
Great, thank you. And to continuation, I just want to also acknowledge the flexibility of the DAC and the SAC as we continue to change the schedule. We will print that schedule. I don't know if you've approved what we went over last night, Dr. Melpakam. And so we'll get that posted and locked and loaded to be the last change of the last change. The good news is the less schools that there are, the less change there can possibly be. So we do appreciate everyone's patience. This is the critical body of work that we bring to bear. This decision to bring it to work sessions is seeking to create a more open dialogue where we're not racing to get to the end of the night. We understand that we have business to do at board meetings, but the goal of each one of those board meetings had really been to present the turnaround solutions for our schools and they were pushing off till 10, 11 o'clock at night. And so this idea of bringing them and pushing them to the front end of a work session to get the fresh best ideas is where we are today. So we hope for a continued open dialogue for the work and we're excited to be able to start with Audubon. Over to you, Sheri.
Thank you. And thank you for the time this afternoon to talk with you about what's going on at Audubon this year. I am pleased to introduce, many of you know Principal Erin Ford, who is leading systematic and quick cycle change at Audubon. I'll be very honest, our goal is not to be here doing this presentation again next year because Audubon will be off the clock and in a much better place academically and culturally. And so we have received feedback on Audubon's plan, both from the DAC Accreditation Subcommittee and from Executive Cabinet. That was the impetus for some final changes that you saw to this presentation probably earlier today. You'll see that much of DAC Accreditation's feedback has been incorporated into what Erin presents this evening. And if there are any last pieces, we'll make sure that those are incorporated into the USIP itself before it comes to you as an action item. And so with that, I am pleased to introduce Principal Erin Ford, Audubon Elementary, to talk with you about their one plan, USIP, and plans for this year. Erin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your time on this opportunity. You know, Audubon's a great school. It sits right in the center of our district, in the center of the city. We've got a lot of amazing things going on. But I was trying to think of a way to say this the right way and Mike actually said it in our K-12 meeting today. You know, data doesn't tell the whole story, but it doesn't lie. And our data shows that we have some work to do. And it has been something that we've needed to start moving forward on. It's been slow to get there with the pandemic since I've gotten over to Audubon, but we have taken it and we're going right ahead with it this year with no excuses on it. So as we dive in, I'm going to present the data. It is what it is, but I look forward to any feedback and questions you all have as we talk about the next steps that we're taking as a school to improve for our students. So with that, we're working to be the best Audubon we can be for our students, staff, and community. We are not a school that's looking at a programmatic way of taking things on. Not to say that a capturing kids' heart school or an avid school is not the right thing, but that's not what the community and staff at Audubon are looking to take on. We're looking to be a great neighborhood school that provides great opportunities for all students. It supports everybody as we move forward. So when we look at that, our scores were not great last year. But something to highlight is our enrollment is up. We came in 40, more than 40 above our projections this year. So there's a lot of good things going on there. And one of the things that even Dr. Malpakam and I have talked about the last four years that I've been there is, Audubon's always had one of the highest permit out areas in School District 11. And that number, our permit out number, is down significantly this year. So we're excited about some of those things. It tells us we are doing some of the right work and engaging the community and making it a school where people want to be at. Now we're changing some things systematically inside to improve those academic scores. So our data story is what it is. There's a lot of things we can say about the last few years. My story is going to be similar to those stories of everybody else. But at the end of the day, we have to do the job of getting students the right pieces that they need to succeed. Ultimately, we didn't meet the expectations. And our goal this year, as Sheri said, is to make sure that we're not sitting here next year. And so we won't be as part of our team. When we look at our five essentials overview, we've seen some improvement in, over the last three years, in ambitious instruction. We saw a drop-off in effective leaders. When we talk about the why behind that, as far as the effective leaders going down last year, and our staff identified this in that perception survey, we had a lot of time where myself, my coach, our teacher learning coach, people were not in classrooms. We weren't in classrooms, but we weren't in coaching capacities and evaluative capacities. We were both in classrooms over 40 days last year covering classes. And so when we look at that number as it came down, that was the identified call-out on that. Not much we could do about that last year. We've reorganized some things this year and that's not as big of an issue. I mean, obviously, the sub-coverage has been a lot better this year. But when we look at that going down, that was the main area that it went down in. When we look at ambitious instruction, one of the things that we looked at as a school last year was really identifying some of those student-to-student talking points and really math instruction. And two years ago, we were at 10% from a student's perception on how math was going. And while 25% is not a great number, it went up. And so students realized and were engaging in higher level work and they identified that themselves. And so when we look at ambitious instruction, a lot of those pieces are student-perceived pieces as well. So we're obviously doing some of the work. We've just got to do more of it and add a little bit more rigor to it. When we look at district benchmark, one of the things that over the past two years that is an unfortunate trend that we've noticed is that at our mid-year point, we're on track to have a lot more students meet expected growth by the end of the year. And then by that test three or that, you know, right before spring break time, that number has fallen slightly. Last year, we saw a huge dip in that in our fifth grade students. Again, there can be reasons why, but it happened. What we did to realign that even last year as an immediate turnaround was to get students involved in coaching conversations with their teachers and goal-setting processes that springboarded us into some of that more globally this year as a school. Because when fifth grade went from doing really well at mid-year to really, really poorly at the end of third quarter, we had to ask the question, why? And some of our top students had dropped 75, 80, almost 100 points. And once they goal-set, we had them retake it fourth quarter and that number turned around. That doesn't reflect in this data because our cycle was first quarter, second quarter, third quarter. But what it showed us is the power of students owning some of their own learning and goal-setting as a part of that, to be active participants in that learning. So again, those are some of the things that we dove right into last year and addressed and are continuing to do so this year on a more global stage across the school rather than just fifth grade. Looking at our Arcadians data for the last few years, the thing that we noticed most about 21, 22 versus 20, 21 is we did see all of our data points go down. One of the things that was added into that last year that's not reflected in the 20, 21 data is we added fourth and fifth grade last year for the first quarter. And we also know that fourth and fifth grade was two of our most highly impacted grades over the past three years going through the pandemic. And we saw that in multiple ways. We see that in our CMAS results. We see that in a lot of different areas. So if we take fourth and fifth grade out of that, those numbers do go up significantly when we're looking at just our K3 literacy piece. But again, this is looking at that K5. What we have done and is noted on here is that one of the successes that we really want to highlight is our number of read plans and SRD students are significantly reading, our significant read students has gone down over the last four years. And so we're doing a lot of good work with that in our K1, 2 levels, providing that best-first instruction, but also having very, very targeted interventions where we've been combining some grade levels such as kindergarten, first grade, and using all of our expert staff to work with the students at their best area of need. So our highest students maybe are going up and working with a first-grade teacher on some higher-level skills so that we can push them and grow them. While maybe some of our first-grade students that are still working on correct letter sounds are maybe going down and doing a 30-minute intervention block every day with kindergarten students or vice versa. So it really is ability grouping in that capacity, which we're seeing that, the fruits of that come out in the reduction of our read plans and things like that. You know, CMAS is the biggest measure that gets us into a turnaround status or not. And as a prior improvement school, we look no further than our SPF and what came out on CMAS. And one of the things that Audubon has had a strength in over the years has been our achievement process, our achievement scores. While growth scores weren't necessarily always where they needed to be this past year, again, for whatever we want to point fingers at, our achievement scores were down as well. And so when we have low achievement, low growth, we end up at a 34 on the SPF. And so we said to ourselves, even going into the one plan before our SPF data came out, we knew that we had work to do. And once our SPF's came out in August, we're like, yep, we, we, I didn't expect it to be a 34, I'm going to be honest, but it, it's kind of that wake-up call for us as saying that we need to do some things differently and look at things from a different lens and approach. So when we look at that, our literacy numbers are about the same for the last two years as far as students that met or exceeded. But we jumped significantly in that, just even that did-not-meets category. And we have to look at why that is and what are we doing to address those needs to provide a systematic change for all students at both the intervention level and that tier-one best-first instruction. When we look at math, we saw a big decrease in that number of students that did not meet. But I caution ourselves to, while that's a good number, we also had a very small cohort of students that we looked at with that. Two years ago, that group that took math was in fourth grade and one of our group, one of our classes completely missed CMAS due to quarantines and the processes that we had in place there. So while that percentage point goes way down, we also added a significant amount of students to that. So it's a celebration, but we have work to do globally in that area. And that, as we talk about what we're doing to put things in place, a big focus of our building has moved into that math area so that we're really doing some deliberate work in engaging in our new math curriculum, Dream Box, and those types of things through our PLC work. I've already mentioned it, we know why we're here, 34.5. Again, that was not, I didn't think it was going to be that low, but it did not surprise me that we fell into that priority improvement or improvement status based on just kind of where our data was trending last year. So it wasn't a shock. It's still kind of hurt. We went through the stages of grief. But like I said, it's, we can blame this, that, or the other, sub-coverage, whatever we want to point the finger at, other schools hit it and we didn't. And so we have to say, sometimes stealing from them, what are they doing well? We have, you know, some field trips from some of our staff set up just even the next couple of weeks to go down and see some other schools and what they're doing in PLC work and things around backwards design planning to help us with that, to use the experts in the room. Like, we can't just figure it out on our own sometimes. We're using the people that are around us and the schools that are finding ways to do it, even through the pandemic. We can't just put all the blame on that. So in our improvement challenge, our performance challenge is that student achievement and growth scores in math and ELA are well below what grade level expectations should be as evidenced by Arcadians, local, district, and state assessments. That's where we're at. And we're going to, you know, grab ourselves by the bootstraps, pick ourselves up, and move forward. So talking about that, so our plan to act, our major improvement strategy, one focuses on best-first instruction. You know, student achievement rates and growth, as we just, as I just mentioned, are well below what the grade level expectation should be. So where our dive into best-first instruction was this year is more in the area of planning for learners versus planning for teaching. Trying to get away from the idea of just opening up a curriculum book when teachers walk in and turning the page and just teaching what's on that page that day. We have to get more into the data. We have to use Star Renaissance that we adopted this year, our Arcadians data, our Common Form of Assessment data, whatever things that are at our, that are available to us and really identify where do we need to target students. And we've started doing that work. It's been some painful work because we've had to do a lot of looking in the mirror. I have myself, our entire building has. And so sometimes it hasn't been easy. But we're now at a place where we are starting to gain that momentum of looking at what do we need to do and regardless of the hard work that it's going to be, owning it because that's what kids need. So with that, we've kind of changed, oh, sorry.
Do you want questions per slide or do you want it to the end?
That is up to you all. We can, we.
Just to clarify question on this one.
Please do.
And relying less on the curriculum to drive instruction. How, what do you, was there a point that you make with that, with the lessons and units and data standards versus curriculum? Or just clarify that for me?
So yeah, so looking at it and looking at the standards to develop where we're working towards. Because that is where we're trying to get students mastery level towards. In the past, some of our practice has been to just literally open up the math teacher's guide.
Okay.
And just turn it page by page.
Got it.
And it what, while that it can be aligned to the standards, it wasn't specific to all the standards.
And secrets, things like that, makes sense.
And sometimes we got caught up in that idea of, well, we have to hit this page by this day. It's like, well, if the kids don't have the prerequisite, they can't keep going. And then we just start getting really lost in the weeds.
That makes sense.
And that's, that was our dive. And our teachers identified that, uh to be honest, I went into the one plan trying to hope that we would get people to talk about collaborative practices in the classroom. And it, because this is, this is where I was hoping to get next year, thinking that that's where we needed to go. Uh but the teacher said, nope, we need to take off the big, we need to take the bigger bite right now. And so that that was on them and I sat there, I was like, I was very impressed. I was very happy with that because they, they saw the work that needed to be done and took that on themselves.
I've got to ask, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right. So our action steps that go along with our MIS one. Um we've asked teachers to start creating a scope and sequence uh for ELA and math quarterly so that we're really looking at where are we going? Where do we want to get to by the end of quarter one? They just turned in scope and sequences for quarter two. And while that doesn't mean that they're gonna be on that exact lesson on that exact day, we're planning out assessments, we're doing our Eureka modules, our pre-assessments, our post-assessments so that we can also plan PLC conversations around those things that we're doing so that we know how to go back and reteach. It's also helping us align our intervention schedule and our um changing of those blocks uh with that. So by doing that, it keeps us from saying on a Monday, ah, what am I gonna be doing by Wednesday? It really is purposely looking out at a long-term plan of where are we going? What do we need to do between today and that point to get there? And if we don't get there, we have to ask the question why. But we're not gonna be in a place where, oh, Eureka's not working this year or this week, so I'm not gonna teach math. We still have to get, keep going and figure out how to make that happen because we do have a plan moving forward.
Yeah, so can I just ask, and maybe this is a question, um I'm not sure, I'll start with the top. So um there was a time when we talked about systematizing the delivery of instructions so that if a child left one District eleven school in second grade and went to another one that they wouldn't have a gap in the learning. And what I'm hearing is individualized instruction for your school that fits your school. So are we now changing or have we already changed to say, we're gonna advise plans for, for your school? You have a goal that you need to to move your kids along and this is how you're gonna do it.
So it's, it's a yes and, which is every school and every student should have a differentiated, individualized and personalized plan to meet a set objective. And so the scope and sequence exists, the standards are baked. Um the way that one thing will happen in a particular classroom will be able to translate into any other classroom as the history of record of learning travels with the child. We will not be teaching a different version of world history at one school than we do from a different school. The curriculum is designed centrally at the um at central office or by the district and approved by the board. And then it is disseminated. May there be a nuance between parallel lines on Tuesdays and perpendicular wa- lines on Thursdays? Yes, but is there an objective that, I believe that's a fourth grade standard um that that is sta- that that happens for all fourth graders in about the same time? Absolutely. Sherry, anything to add to that just because you're.
This work at at Audubon, as it is at at any school, is very much aligned and connected to the quarterly overviews combined with the data that we're seeing at Audubon specific to Aaron's students. How do we put those two together? How do we marry that with the Eureka modules, which are laid out over the course of a a school year? So that as students move and we have a mobility rate, they don't experience repetitions and gaps. Um but in a far more intentional way, so that we ensure that when we get to the end of the quarter, we're actually where we should be and students have been exposed to grade level material all throughout that quarter in a very intentional way versus it's Tuesday, I must be on lesson two, that sort of a thing. Does that help?
It does help, thank you.
Sure.
So is it really creating scope and sequence or more going back to the district creative scope and sequences and figuring out how to differentiate and personally apply those at your building site?
So I think it's, it's both. So we, I mean, we started with the new quarterly overviews that rolled out this year and said, by quarter one, these should be our focus standards and the work that we should be doing. Here's opportunities uh for performance assessments, all that kind of stuff. So we looked at that and then we said, here's math. So third grade teachers took what should be done in first quarter in math, then took the Eureka modules and said, here's where we need to layer it out. We intentionally waited for like that first quarter scope and sequence until we did some assessing at the beginning of the year to say, how slow do we need to start? How fast do we need to start based on where kids are? So but as Sherry said, by the end of first quarter, we should be hitting all of these pieces. But what, we may be a week off of where things were at Stratton.
Sure.
You know, as as we went. So it was very intentionally done from that uh quarterly overview. And then we built basically our scope and sequences, not in a way to like catch teachers or gotchas, but to say, we, we can't walk in on a Tuesday morning and say, what am I gonna do today?
Sure.
And and so that was the intention behind it, but it aligns to the standards, the priority standards that are found within each quarterly overview that we're working on.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense. It was more my concern of if every school is having to create their own scope and sequence, even though we have a quarterly overview that we could use as a base template, then we can just tweak it for your needs. That makes sense, so.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing.
Love it.
Uh so when we look at our action step number two, um it was really in redesigning our PLC meetings and structures. Uh the best leverage that we have is the teachers in the room together and then that dedicated time to doing the work. Uh I think it goes without saying, this is a job that has a lot of demands on it. Um and there's a lot of hours put in outside of the day. Uh but we're also looking at how can we best leverage our time when we have teachers in the building um to support them in the work that they're doing. And so with that, uh we are using our district instructional coach, Jeanette Knight, has been starting to come in uh and so support our school in building structures um for uh for PLCs. Uh last year, we had dedicated PLC time, but a lot of that eventually rolls into field trip planning and just conversations thing. So we have very intentionally set aside our embedded time on Tuesdays uh and our instructional coach and myself are in those PLCs. And we've just basically set aside Tuesdays on our calendars, like that is our priority to be there to support teachers and be in those conversations. If you need somebody to come in and help you, Philip Hutcherson from the math department was in this past Tuesday because our first and second grade team said, we needed support in DreamBox and math. Great, call on, you know, making that phone a friend, having him come in and he is there to support and answer questions and whatever that was. So being very intentional about it so that as we move forward, we can continue to expand because this is where our backwards design planning is gonna come into place. This is where we're gonna do that work. We're building those norms and expectations right now so that we can quickly dive into that work as we continue going along. Uh and then it, it, two and three kind of go hand in hand. It really is backwards design, team planning and math and ELA. Uh we have to know where we're going. And through a process that we went through, I think it was last week. Um I've had about four one-plan reviews in the last two weeks. So um it it it's, it's been a lot. But with that, you know, one of the strategies that was brought up that we hadn't taken on before is even having students take, or teachers, take the end of module assessment in Eureka so that they really know what they're gonna be teaching for that module. So if we're doing module three, we can't get to that assessment at the end and the teachers say, well, this isn't how I taught it. So of course the kids missed it. Well, we need to, we need to know what we're doing and where we're going with it. And so um we had that conversation over the last couple of weeks and that was presented to all K-12 principals today as just, as a tool to use as we look at what can intentionally design backwards planning look like. We have to know where the end is first and then we can plan towards that so that we're making sure we're hitting those targets. Any other questions on MIS one before I?
PLC meetings that you said happens weekly every Tuesday?
So we are having PLC meetings every week. Uh what we have done this year with our PLC design is from the beginning of the year, we set out specific, basically in six-week cycles, to have intervention meetings during some of those so that we're breaking back down after we're doing an intervention cycle um through our intervention block and redoing groups so that we're having database discussions. But then the rest of those meetings are either student success meetings, meaning we're talking about kids or grade level PLCs where the grade level teams are designing the agenda and then we're going in to support that. But teachers have that opportunity every Tuesday. And then every other Wednesday with that other dedicated PLC time, we're doing some vertical PLC uh work where, because fourth and fifth grade never get to work together. But that's very important when we start talking about what do they need to know, what are they getting? So we're using some of that time as well as professional development during that time.
And you are there and the TLC is there, like most of them?
Uh uh everyone we can be at.
Okay.
I mean, to be honest, yesterday behaviors, you know, went everywhere and so I got to go to one and a half yesterday, but.
The day after Halloween, really?
Yeah. Who knew? I I walked out after the first one and I told Jeanette, our instructional coach, I'm like, do we really need to have PLCs the day after Halloween? Cause like the teachers are just like, huh, they're, they're tired, I mean, but we're, we're gonna dig in and do the work, so. But yes, so every Tuesday we have PLC. Uh and the way we did that is we modified our essential schedule um and adding our halftime art teacher in for that as well as incorporating tech time. So our LTE does seize every class every other week. But that and, that ensures every teacher gets a planning block and their PLC block back-to-back so that it's not hit or miss. Students aren't like here for forty-five minutes and back to class and then out again. It's dedicated blocks um every Tuesday.
Nice, thank you.
All right, looking at MIS two, um one of the things that Audubon um has had in past history is continuity uh among classes and systems building-wide, specifically um in behavioral expectations, PBIS-type things. Uh this is impacted in students that have led to inconsistent expectations and in turn made them frustrated. Attendance has been an issue, uh as well as we've had some significant ba- behaviors that have been challenging. Uh so our theory of work on this is that having consistent practices, expectations and learning focuses will allow students to know where they are and where they're going. Uh it's really hard to consequence a student for something that we've never taught them the expectations for and told them what we expected them. With that, we jump into our action steps. Uh one of uh our first ones was to really create and implement a consistent PBIS system this year. Uh this was work that we started four years ago. Uh but as we know, four years ago, a lot of things shifted. And so last year, we started to piece it back together, but then this year, we really set out and made it a goal in our one plan to really systematically change some of the work that we're doing to have those consistent expectations. Uh so our first one is a new reward system that is more intrinsically based versus um token-based. And so what students do is they get a punch card that has a twenty-four, that has twenty-four punches available that align with the six areas of the random X of kindness that we're doing. And so as they fill that up, they get to twenty-four, they get to come down to our office, they get to show that to our ladies in the office, they get celebrated. And then we have a board that they get to go then pick quality time with an adult. And so every person in our, every teacher, adult, ESP, para has a card up. And so if you want to pick Mr. Ford to spend time with, you're gonna play with uh Star Wars Ozobots that I have in my office. Uh if you want to pick Mr. Watson or LTE, you're gonna go have pizza and read a book uh one day. But it's really to try to connect kids in a more meaningful way with the adults in the building uh and not make it about the slap bracelet that they get. Doesn't mean that, you know, students of the month don't get a special little bag of goodies and stuff like that, but um it's really motivated students. And one of the things that we're gonna have to change, to be honest, is our um our implementation steps or what we're hoping to get. By the end of the year, we're hoping everybody would fill out two cards. We're on pace that everybody will have two cards filled out by the end of semester one. And so the kids have really bought into it, the staff has really bought into it. Uh if you ever come in, you're gonna get a single hole punch yourself, cause you can give uh kids a punch. Uh but they carry them around in with lanyards and in passport sleeves that we bought that are clear so that they can now take them to their specials classes or take them to lunch where I'm at a recess. We definitely encourage them, like during PE, don't have, you know, a rope around your neck. Um but it's a way to build it building-wide. So it's not just on it, on the classroom teacher or we have to have different systems in different parts of the building. It really is meant to do it school-wide. Uh something that we're starting to implement um as we dive into quarter number two is new student welcome packets. Our PTA partners with us on that and they've built um packet, like bags with all kinds of Audubon swag and just welcome materials. But then they're gonna meet with our counselor and our social worker, myself, and do kind of like a orientation to the building, what's going on, what's new, teach them those expectations that we've now spent a full quarter teaching all of the rest of our students. To be honest, if we look at our behavior data from quarter one, over eighty percent of the things that we, that I wound up having in my office were from students that had not been at Audubon previous. And so they're new students to us and it's more of a teaching opportunity for them to learn and grow based on what our expectations are and what that's gonna look like. And so we're trying to be proactive in teaching that rather than saying, oh yeah, you were new last month, we just never got a chance to do it. Or being systematic about it to make sure that they know where they are and what, what it looks like so that they can be successful in school. Um and with that, we are also working on putting together a school-wide training video so that it's not piecemeal together, but if a teacher's having a problem on the playground, say, hey, let's go back and review this two-minute playground video. It's a consistent expectations for every student, every level, K through five, uh to support them. So that, that's been the action steps that we've been taking for consistent implementation of that system. Uh but then we've also doubled down on our social emotional learning this year. We know that um students are coming with a significant amount on their plates. Um and we're not gonna see the academic success and gains that we need to if we also don't address that socially-emotional piece and support them there. So we are a random X of kindness school, uh we have been since I came in four years ago. That was, Audubon was part of cohort two. Uh so the random X of kindness piece has kind of been flowing. Uh teachers are the owners of that, they're teaching those lessons. But what we're finding through our panorama data and just behavioral data in general is random X of kindness is a great tier-one base level program. We need to do some things to support kids at a higher level. And what we noticed is it's not one or two kids, it's a significant amount of students. And so we're going in, our counselor and our social worker every other week and teaching additional SEL um lessons based on grade level specific needs as evidenced by our panorama data. So an example might be um conflict resolution in our fourth and fifth grade classes. They might be going in and teaching kids how to work through that more, what might be a tier-two thing most years because it's seventy percent of our kids, it really becomes tier-one. And so we're doing it with everybody rather than in small groups. And then those students that need additional small group work are then working with our counselors, uh social workers. Um they partner really well together, even though one is funded out of the MLO and one is funded out of special education. They work hand in hand with each other to make sure that they're supporting all students regardless of where their job title comes from. But that way, we can address those needs so that they can be more prepared to be in the classroom and learn based on, you know, and get their academics where they need to be as well. Any questions on our MIS two or the, these action steps?
How about, I think in the previous slide, you also mentioned attendance as being a problem. Has this helped attendance to?
So we're see, we, we, we have seen an increase in our attendance this year. Um our chronic absenteeism last year was close to thirty. Um and we're not anywhere.
Thirty percent or thirty students?
Thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty percent of our students were considered chronically absent. Um now again, some of that had to do with, you have to do like a mandatory quarantine or, you know, things like that. And I know we coded it so that it didn't show as missing, but there's only so much you're gonna get through doing schoolology courses outside of work, outside of school and meet with your teachers for twenty minutes a day versus being in the classroom. Uh so our, our attendance is up to something that, any building that I've been in, a struggle that we're, we are having this year still, to be honest, is kindergarten, first grade attendance. Um and a lot of that has to do with they're being introduced to illness for the first time and they legitimately are sick. Um that, 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 that is a thing. Uh but we also, in kindergarten, um I think sometimes parents know that we, we can talk about truancy, we can talk about the importance of it, but at the end of the day, they're like, they're five, I'm just gonna keep them home. And a sniffle sometimes means a week. Um and we're really trying to change that mindset because when they get into first grade, they've missed a significant amount. If they've missed twenty, thirty days of kindergarten, they're not ready for first grade. So having those conversations, our teachers are having conversations with parents about that. Um we're trying to build some systems in the school, uh and I'm not gonna lie and say that we have it figured out because we don't. Um that is some help that, you know, we're needing to work towards. Uh but we are seeing an increase in attendance and we are also seeing a decrease in behaviors this year as we have set these systematic pieces in place. So that has been helping.
Do you send out some type of weekly newsletter or something to your parent community?
We we do it monthly. So we we've been doing some stuff monthly. Um to be honest, I I can see where, the next question would be like, are we including some of the attendance pieces in it? We talked about the importance of attendance, but what we're starting to get to now is now that we have data, even our punch card system, we're gonna start sharing that with the community and our parents to say, here's what's going on, here's our practices. Here's how many students are achieving this status in our, in our building with our punch cards. Here's our attendance data, here's the importance of it. So we need to do a better job of communicating that. I'm gonna own that myself. Uh but yes, we do have some communication. It's just not in, it doesn't include all of those pieces yet.
Well, I mean, to improve attendance, we need the support and partnership of parents.
Correct.
Without that, it's not going to happen. So somehow we need to communicate that and I appreciate what your teachers are doing, calling and letting them know that twenty days or thirty days of this time is not acceptable. So uh another way I thought would be to.
Absolutely.
Newsletter or.
Consistent communication about it.
And PDA.
Yep.
And uh parent engagement through those activities, letting them know the importance of being in the classroom.
Absolutely.
And does that go both electronically in the paper?
Uh we have gone away from the paper.
It's all electronic.
It's all electronic. We use uh, we use Blackboard, we also use ClassDojo. So we send something out on one, especially something that's schoolwide, we send it out on both. Because some parents have, for whatever reason, blocked their email, you know, every time I send one out, I get the, you know, the recall rate of, you know, you know, seventy-five emails are undeliverable. Um and now that may be because they don't have an inactive email on file, uh but it, some of it's also um parents have just blocked it for whatever reason. And so we also use ClassDojo and we have about a ninety-five percent parent engagement rate on ClassDojo. Um even that, we still don't have a hundred percent of parents uh engaged in that. But that also provides a great two-way communication between teachers and parents um to be able to have a quick communication. Uh one of our first grade teachers that came in this year, uh one of the things she does by eight-thirty, if she's missing students, she's sending them a message like, hey, we're missing so-and-so today, hope everything's okay, can you let me know what's going on? And inevitably that leads to a phone call to the office like, hey, just need to let you know they're out sick. Um or I I tell people to be honest, like sometimes you have a wedding and you need to go to a wedding, I don't want you to lie to me about it, we'll excuse it. Um and do that, but we don't want to be become something where can I have every Friday off? Uh no. Answer to that is no. Uh so.
Do you have a need for um your communication to go out in more and more language?
Uh we do not at all. Um you know, we uh we have one student identified ELL in our, in our building and they um their family is fluent in English. Um she's just identified um in ELL. So um no, at this point we do not.
Thank you.
Yep.
And last week at the parent-teacher conferences, do you have an idea uh of the participation was uh was it? Did you get all the parents to come and engage with the teachers to find out how their students are doing?
So after yesterday, cause we had a few parents that had to reschedule for Monday and Tuesday, uh we ended up at ninety-seven percent um of our, of our parents engaged. And sometimes that meant a teacher was going out to the car and meeting with the parent in the parking lot. And and I commend them for doing that, cause they were very, we wanted to get some very specific things out there. Um and so whatever means of that happening, it happened. So in most classes, it was a hundred percent. Um you know, we had a few families not engaged and they're the same families not engaged in ClassDojo and things like that. Um so we, we still wanna work to engage them in different ways. Um they're just not engaging back with us in that capacity yet.
When ninety-seven percent uh speaks for itself, we can be a hundred percent when ninety-seven percent.
We can be a hundred percent. It it gives us a goal.
Well, we gotta go chasing after more cars.
Right. And and that's alright. Uh but yeah, so we're, we're, we're really happy with that.
Yep. Go ahead, finish the rest of your presentation.
So the the next piece, and I went back, so resources and supports. So um some of the things that are ongoing already this year at Audubon. Uh I I mentioned our one plan reviews. Uh the district has initiated um for every school quarterly one plan review. Uh where Natasha Kraus, uh Ari Super Dennis, Osherry, somebody from Crooked Instruction, um educator effective in his office come out and they help us go through our one plan, where, what are we doing, how's it looking? What's our data looking like? And then we review it and and update it a little bit. Uh as a prior improvement school, there's a new process that was started uh just recently um by Ms. Lassaveto and uh we were one of the first schools to go through that last week. Um and what that one did is very much uh focused on our major improvement strategy one, so for best first instruction. And as I said earlier, our jumping off point was really the idea of planning for learning versus planning for teaching. And so we took the opportunity to really dive into it in the, in the world of math. Um and that's where we were getting some of our um biggest leverage feedback pieces right now. Um and what we learned through that process is a sixty-minute meeting wasn't long enough. So we still, like, we we have a follow-up that we're scheduling to finish that work uh with that team. But to really say what, what can we do um to get some little wins right now to keep us moving forward? But what is our long-term plan? And what I said to Sherry and our team that was there last week, uh we're not gonna be in this position next year. Uh we're gonna be off of improvement status. I'm confident in saying that. Uh however, to get us where we need to get, we're talking a two, three-year process. Um this is not gonna get fixed overnight. Um and we're not gonna have all of a sudden ninety percent achievement and ninety percent growth. We're gonna start working our way out of this hole. Um but we have the right people to do the work and we're getting the support through these one plan reviews, um through our, um what is our second bullet point here, our district instructional coach. Um Jeanette and Knight has been coming in now for the last, I would say about six weeks, um and starting to work with our PLC teams. On Tuesdays, she's split between two schools, so she's primarily working with our intermediate teams right now. And then we're taking that learning from her to build processes that we can take to all of our teams uh throughout the building. Um and that work has been, you know, helping us have alignment, norm setting, protocols for impactful PLCs. Whether that be a teacher-led um classroom-level PLC, whether that be a data-driven PLC for like intervention meetings. Uh we have different types of PLCs, and so we're building protocols around each of those so that we know ahead of time what we need to bring to the table, so that we're ready to have that conversation. Um and then departmental support, um again, with math being an area that we've seen traditionally um low growth in at Audubon just across the board. We have been starting to get some of those supports. Um like I said, Phil Hutcheson's been in now a few different times. Uh Paul is coming in in a couple of weeks to do some learning walks with me uh in the area of math. Um and then we were identified as a school to get additional support through Andy Schaefer who uh has worked all over the state, but primarily with CDE and coming in and doing some um very engaging coaching um and modeling for teachers. So those are some of the things that, just as far as resources and supports that have happened from the district already this year. Um we definitely feel those supports and we're seeing some of those um wins that we're already starting to have.
How um, what's your percentage of returning teachers? Or the other way is how many new teachers do you have recently?
Uh HR got really tired of me this summer. Um gonna be honest, uh we have eighteen new people um or new positions in our building this year. So um some people that moved around a little bit, uh but we had a lot of retirements. Uh we had, I think, seven retirees last year. And then multiple people um have other opportunities, so whether it was in the paraprofessional world, uh moving up from kindergarten teacher assistant to a staff assistant at high school, like. So good promotional type opportunities for them. So uh but we we have eighteen new people and we're still currently looking for six more. Um and of those six, we have all of our classrooms filled right now. Uh we have all, we we, knock on wood, we have our special education team filled right now. Uh but we were one of the schools to be identified as um to host a new preschool. So we have the preschool. Uh we got an application yesterday for a teacher, so let's, let's hope that goes through. Uh because that would take plate, that'll take care of three of those hires. Um and then our fifth grades are extremely big this year, they're thirty-one and thirty-one, so we're trying to hire class size eights. So those are the hires that we have, they're still ongoing, but twelve classroom, we have twelve classroom teachers, we have all of our essentials filled. So those areas are um rocking and rolling right now.
Thank you. You mentioned that uh your choice applications or people aren't choosing out as much. Do you have any theme that you can attribute to why that might be or just it's what it is?
No, I I think it, there's a couple of things I think we can attribute some of it to. Um one, uh when you look at Audubon's boundary area a few years ago, when Globe moved from the Longfellow Building out, um that happened right as the pandemic was hitting and a lot of students stayed with them or families stayed with them um as that move happened. So we thought we'd see a increase in enrollment and we didn't. But a lot of that was because those families could just remotely stay with Globe and it made sense if they were fourth graders and they could finish out that last year. Uh so we don't see, we see, we're seeing a bigger portion of that part of our boundary area now choose Audubon uh because it's, it's not easy access anymore. So uh we have seen that. We did a lot of work last year and just really trying to be positive and get our name out there. Um and there's been a lot of good things and a lot of good changes. I still say that if I can get you in the front door, um I'll sell you on our building and I'll keep you there. And so we're really trying to increase traffic around the building using our facilities, like we have a huge fence that rolls right along the circle, so using that for messaging, whether it um be positive messaging. Um right now, through a red ribbon week last week, we have a new message that the students put up that says, you are enough. And so really just encouraging that positivity, but that's also created a couple of news stories and like KOA five came out a couple of years ago and took us up on that. Parents are talking, like, talk about that. So just doing little things that we can uh to do that. And I think we all know that positive word of mouth is the best way. Uh we've had a lot of people really start promoting and praising what we're doing at Audubon and some of the changes that they've had over the last few years.
Great, congrats.
Thanks.
Um one follow-up question I had, when you were talking about your re-plan reduction and kind of what you were doing, could you just expand on that a little bit more? It's intriguing. And I guess I'll follow up with whoever, uh do we have other schools that are also participating in this kind of a plan or is it you're piloting it and we'll just keep an eye and see how it works?
I I don't know that we're piloting anything that's innovative.
Yeah.
Um the the biggest thing that we did last year is we um, we had talked about it when I first came in. Um really dedicated an intervention block for all students. And so then COVID happened and then remote learning, blah blah. Last year, um kind of my line in the sand was we're gonna have a school-wide intervention block that supports every single student. Not just those students that have a re-plan, not just those students that are tier three. But every single student last year started getting a thirty-minute reading intervention. Um and so our interventionists, our tutors, um we build our schedule around that uh cause it's not all happening at once, but by grade level. And then we intentionally embed like kindergarten, first grade together about mid-year, so we start sharing those students. Cause kindergartners aren't ready for it in August or September. Uh but I think that that's been a huge piece of that is we're not, we're not just setting it on the teacher's shoulders to make sure every kid has everything that they need, cause we know in kindergarten there's such a wide need for students. Um we can target those kids that need correct letter sounds, we can target those kids that and we have a first, our kindergartner that just got tested yesterday and started and hit the like three-point-nine grade level. So we gotta do something different for that student. Um you know, having him sit there and, you know, do, you know, sight words or things like that. He's just like, he can walk in and read every single thing hanging in the office. It's like, okay. So I I think that that's been, you know, a big part of it is just being very systematic in how we're supporting every single student. Uh with that, our intervention block's not just thirty minutes, it's fifty minutes. So every student has a thirty-minute reading intervention every day and then a twenty-minute wind block. So for what? I need time. Uh we have, every grade level um has shifted that wind time to math this year. Uh but we have some students that, you know, maybe once a week, that time is dedicated towards going and doing a small group with our counselor. Um or embedding some GT opportunities. So it's really trying to limit the pullouts that happen. Uh because students that are on an IP, they're getting reading minutes, they're going during that intervention time, so that we're also not pulling them from their whole group time. Because we know how important that exposure is for every student regardless of where you're at. So that, that was our big lift last year. And while our CMAS data didn't show significant gains, if we show all of the gains that we saw in our intervention groups and do that tracking, we had students jumping like three levels of groups over the course of the year and we hate the idea that we have fifth graders doing phonemic awareness groups, uh because that should be something that is mastered in that K-one-two level. We do. Um and teachers are like, gosh, I I don't wanna be doing this, I wanna be doing novel studies. We'll get back to that place, but if we start doing the right work now in K-one-two and filling those gaps and reducing those numbers of SRD students and replanned students, we'll get back to that grade level full teaching um across the board in those upper grades.
Did you see that the fifty minutes is every day?
It's it's every day.
It's the right schedule. And so
Yeah.
I'm glad you explained that more because when you first shared, I thought you were saying that like a kindergartner might go sit in on a first grade class for thirty minutes. That's not what's happening.
No, it's it's not, it, that has happened in the past. That's not what we're doing anymore. It is saying that in kindergarten, first grade in particular, cause we layer those two grade levels on top of each other when, at mid-year. It's, that means we have two kinder, kinder TAs, we have two teachers, we have our entire intervention team, so we might have nine places for students to go. And so they can get a very direct targeted intervention in that.
Very good.
I'm curious to to learn how it is that upper grade level teachers are teaching phonemic awareness.
Yeah, it's 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 been fun. You know, um and I get.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And thank you for for recognizing that without those foundations, even though they're in fourth and fifth grade, to ignore that, it really does a disservice. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know she walked in, she said Medicare instructional coach Meredith, she's been, she's been the key cog in that of training teachers, training our interventionists. Um cause one of our fifth grade teachers, she's taught SIPs now. Uh it's not her favorite thing to do, but she does it because that's where the kids' needs are. Uh our reading interventionist through our S R funds, she's also doing some of those things. So we want, we want some of our certified teachers teaching those things as as often as we can. You know, we don't, we're not a title school, we don't have um some of the same funds to hire a, a team of certified interventionists um that other schools do. Uh so we're making the best of what we have, but we're being strategic about the, the adults that we put in front of students and making sure that the right adults are doing the right things for students in those groups.
So thank you. Any other specific feedback from the board on the Audubon School Improvement Plan? You saw the major improvement strategies and action steps. Any other feedback that we can provide to Principal Ford? That he can input in the, in his plan uh before it comes as an actual item in front of the board?
Thank you. In the accreditation um email that we received from the DAC Accreditation Subcommittee, when they reviewed the slides, they mentioned that the data shows um or it that the demographics aren't really addressed in our slides. So are they addressed in your one plan? Um they note that the achievement by subgroup and minority data shows significant gaps in achievement.
Yeah, and so inside the one plan, yes.
Okay.
Um it, like, we pulled that data and we looked at that specific data and that is through our intervention programming, um looking at targeting students at their need. And as I said, like, last year we started it really with reading. And this year we've extended it into math in a lot of ways to say, what are those specific needs? Um so demographically, um really academically where they're at. So yes, that, that, if we pulled up the one plan, you're gonna see where we specifically look at those things. It's just not called out for this presentation in this.
Forward's worth, I'll probably follow up on that kind of thing every time.
We're happy to add a slide as we go through these to call out specific demographics. It goes without saying that if you're a priority school and you look at the makeup of the students that we're supporting, that the definition of this data is inclusive of the minorities that we serve. So it is, it is almost impossible for me to think of a scenario where it would be counter to that. But we will break out by black, by brown and by English language learners. And you will see the very consistent low level of performance is what you see. And if you wanna just go all the way back to your data slides there real quick in the beginning, you know, when we reviewed this data last week, I mean, it was, you know, I actually go one forward. Nope, that one right there. So that twenty-twenty-one year, um I I'm happy to break out that sixty-three percent of kids who are red and tell you that the, what was, what's the green there? Blue?
Five.
Five, that there are five white children that are green and that everybody else is black and brown. That's not the case. The consistent way that we're not meeting expectations in not just Audubon, but all the schools that are coming, these are not school reviews. These are priority improvement plans where we are recognizing the very general nature. Where we are recognizing the very general nature of failure of how we are serving all children. So we will be happy to add any demographic slide, but we are coming at this as in, if you chase after that tail at sixty-three, you will have closed gaps. I promise you that. So to, we will add another slide to meet the, the, the request of the board. But I just wanna be careful that we're not hiding data here. All our kids are not achieving at Audubon. Those slides say that. So that is the body of work why we are here. Because as the state has mandated, if you are below that number, you have to come to the board and the community with a plan and we're coming forward with that.
I'll just follow up that, um, the DAC Accreditation Team for both Audubon and Martinez. I think you were copying on what they, the feedback they have and
Yes.
so I won't go through and repeat it all, but just circling back on their comments and making sure that those comments are incorporated. But just a shout out to that group as well. I mean, it's amazing that they take the time to go through these plans as well. I know the board really appreciates having the extra set of eyes to help review these and just that we're gonna get better. I mean, it's a hard pill to swallow where we're at and I appreciate you recognizing that you're in a look for bootstraps and get to it. And so let us know how we can support you. Sounds like you're getting the support you needed from comments you've made, but if there's anything else, please don't be quiet.
I usually am not.
And I appreciate the fact that you were here upfront owning the data. It is what it is. Could you also give us a little bit of background on how long you've been at Audubon, what your history with that school is?
So this is my fourth year. Um, I started the year that the pandemic hit. Um, and so
That would be twenty nineteen?
Nineteen twenty. Yeah, nineteen twenty was my first year. Um, so you know, we were kinda sailing along for about six months and you know, then March twenty twenty hit. Um, and so we've, we've had some things that I would definitely call it as successes when we talk about, um, teacher engagement during that time. Um, we were, we were in a good place. We didn't have teachers. And, and not to say that teachers that stepped away and said, I need to take a leave or do any of those types of things is wrong. Uh, but we didn't have a single teacher do that. Um, so we have dedicated staff to our students that wanna do the right thing. Um, and Audubon's one of those schools that a lot of people go and end up retiring from. And so when they're here, they wind up being there for twenty years. And so, um, a lot of buy-in with the community with that, uh, which has really helped me start building my relationship with the community. Uh, because a lot of that got stopped three years ago. And, uh, we're really this year able to really dive back into that engagement with the community. Because as much as we wanted to the last couple of years, we said, yeah, we want you to be a part of it, but you have to do it from the curb. And, and that was hard. Um, and so as I said, getting people in the building. Um, you, you're gonna walk in, you're gonna love our school. Uh, we've done a lot of things inside the building, just facilities wise, um, to make it a open, appealing, you know, building. Um, we need to close it off a little bit, our main entry, you know, for security purposes, but, um, it, it, it's a beautiful place. We just gotta get you there. We're excited that we have the opportunity to do that again. We had an awards assembly last Wednesday for families and we invite every, you know, families for all of our students that got it. And last year we were, when we were finally allowed to have parents come in, we were averaging about twenty, twenty-five of those parents coming in. We had over a hundred parents sitting in our gym with those students last week to celebrate their successes for quarter one. And so we're, we're starting to see that come back up. But yeah, over the last four years, we've made a lot of gains and looking forward to what the next couple bring.
So the only reason I asked, so you've got some history in that place. So you know the staff, you've been there, you know the community and you've got from what I, I've been to some of your PDA meetings and SAC meetings, you have community engagement partners. So you are tapped into that community and you know what is going on. So Marcel, if you can go back to the five essentials report. Couple of things, uh, one thing you did talk about the effective leadership and you took ownership of, uh, why that was, that was because you could not be in the classroom as much as, uh, you wanted to, to provide that instructional, instructional leadership.
Right.
So it is happening more this year with you intentionally being in the classroom and providing observations and feedback to our teachers. Not only you, your, um, TLC.
Um, so I'm gonna be, I'm saying that we're in more, uh, we're not in nearly enough.
And why is that?
And so if I'm gonna piggyback on you asking that question and Director Nelson, your question. Um, while we have some successes in our behavior this year and things like that, I'm gonna be honest that I spend probably seventy percent of my day, um, putting out fires and dealing with behaviors and things like that. And so I am missing a lot of opportunities to be in classrooms. Um, our instructional coach, uh, she is working as hard as she can, uh, to do things, but she's covering intervention groups when people are out. To make sure that that stays consistent for kids so that they have that time every day. Um, if, if I was gonna say, and I'm gonna take you up on that offer, you say, what do you need? Um, I, I would love to see the opportunity to have a position in our building as kind of like a hybrid dean that works to, um, really hit four key things, if, if I'm being honest. And Mr. Relic and I had this conversation last year, uh, Sherry and I have had it this year already about so much of our behavior issues could be resolved if we had an opportunity for kids to have a sensory space to go to. But unless you're, have a parent with you and you're on an IP, that isn't the case. Uh, and so my plan would be to have that position that could support being proactive versus reactive. If we need to react to behaviors, we can. Not saying that I'm not a part of that because I should be as a building leader. Um, but supporting with attendance, because attendance calls and attendance that work, th- there's a lot to that. Um, and then being our school assessment coordinator. I think a lot of, um, our assessment coordinating stuff winds up falling on our, um, uh, TLCs. And while they're getting an extra stipend for that this year, um, so much time is dedicated to that work. Um, and that's including in-school and after-school. Um, there's many days where Meredith leaves after I do, because it's just getting everything ready for STAR, benchmark testing, or this, or that. So having a position to do that, I think, could support a school like ours. Uh, we're, we're always right on that cusp of being a title school. Um, we're fifty-eight percent. Fif- I think our final number this year was fifty-nine percent frame reduced. And so if we had been fifty-nine percent last year, we would have been high enough probably to be a title one school this year. And so we have a community that's very, um, that needs that support, but we're always right there on that cusp of getting that extra support. Um, so if I was being honest and the conversations that I've had with, you know, Sherry and people in the past, I think that that could be a very good thing for our building that would allow myself and our TLC to be in the classrooms, providing more coaching, providing more feedback to teachers. Uh, because as we talked about best first instruction, there's a lot of great things with it. Uh, but as I was leaving our building today, as they, as our staff was diving into some of that learning, um, there's a lot of questions around it. And it's hard not to be able to be in the classrooms to support that. But when you're doing two threat assessments a day and some of those types of things that we're doing, um, that's just me being honest with you.
That's fine. Thank you for that feedback, but the report that came from your teachers indicate that you were not in the classrooms. That's why the effective leadership category fell down. So you gotta figure out a way
Yep.
to support them and be in the classroom.
Yep.
Uh, with the challenges that you were talking about. Uh, a- and the collaborative teachers being in the red for the last three years.
So that one, speaking directly to that, our MIS three really addresses that one. Um, some of the feedback we got prior to today was to maybe take some of those pieces out for this presentation. But speaking directly to that, um, it really comes down to professional development, learning opportunities for staff. And that's what the staff has called out. So in our plan this year, uh, we have embedded professional learning throughout the course of the year by being very specific at some of the PLC meetings that are embedded and/or those after-school times. Um, we've incorporated the best first instruction that's come out this year through curriculum instruction into that. Uh, but very much looking and saying, what do we need in our building? And so some of the supports we've been given, um, it started two weeks ago and we're gonna finish up next week. For an example is, um, our education insights team is coming out and training our teachers in common formative assessments and the new performance matter system that we're using this year so that we can target quick CFAs or CIAs to see what, if the work that we're doing is right and the kids are getting it versus waiting until maybe our winter benchmarking window to see. Uh, because we're doing some, we're doing some different work this year. And we wanna make sure that it's working. We don't wanna say, we started it in September and kinda hang on for December and then get there in December and say some of these things didn't work, because that's a big deflation piece. Pop that balloon and I don't wanna see teachers lose some of the momentum that we're getting, uh, with that. So those are some of the things that we've taken on. So that red piece of that collaborative teachers, um, really comes down to that. Uh, as well as teacher to teacher trust. Um, that was a, a low point, um, and has been for a while. Um, teachers really support each other and are there to help each other. Uh, but we have people that vary, um, they own their test scores. And so part of the, part of the five essential survey, the questions that they ask is, you know, do you like sharing kids and doing this collaborative work? And people very much want to say, they're my kids, I need to hold on to them because my name's tied to that test score. And so we've been trying to break that mold of they are our kids and it's not just, it's not just your name on it. Um, so people are starting to realize that. It's not a, it's not, it's not an I gotcha. Um, if you, if your scores weren't where they needed to be, we gotta talk about what we need to do to support you to grow and move forward with it. Um, it's not a, you're a horrible teacher and we're trying to get rid of you type thing. So, um, we've seen some gains in that the last couple of years, um, that I think will show themselves as we continue to move forward, because those numbers did go up last year. They were still low enough that it still came out in that orange category for that.
Okay. So from what I hear, there is a third MIS strategy that is not on this. What's going to be eventually in your school improvement plan?
It is in our school improvement plan. It, it is part of that. Um, it was on the original, um, piece that was hung. Uh, but a lot of that work is waiting to begin until we get MIS one and two fully in place and those practices going. So there's not as much to report on today on those as MIS one and two.
So this is a focus question. So we had this question when it came up, which is, we're not gonna put up three major improvement strategies. When we can't get through just answering why it is that we're not able to move the five essentials in the direction it needs to go. We are gonna focus as the area superintendent's team in partnership with the CAO and Ed Insights on getting the first two right before we get to the third. We have an infinite number of major improvement strategies for every school. No school is ever done. We've never reached Nirvana.
Yep.
We are on major improvement one and two, and that is the body of work that we will deliver at Audubon this year. We are confident that we, the numbers will rebound quickly at Audubon. But we're not gonna continue to add on. And in another perfect world, this is another thing we wanna go to. We have very clear action steps and measures to be able to deliver on. And we're happy to bring a bo- an update to the board on all of these schools, um, in a less formal way after the new year.
Perfect. Okay. The last thing that I would add, um, when I looked at the Martinez and that's coming up next. They had a specific goal attached to, uh, their, uh, school improvement plan. I'm reading from there, by the end of the year, sixty percent of our students in grade three and five will meet or exceed expectations. Do you have any kind of specific goals as to how much of your students you're going to move from where they are now to where they'll end into the year?
So we do, um, we took a giant swing at it and we said that, um, so just like in cadence, for an example, that, um, by mid-year, seventy-five percent of our students will have moved up a, a band or be at, be at or above grade level and that ultimately our goal is a hundred percent. And so while we may not reach a hundred percent, I didn't wanna say, well, we're just gonna shoot for fifty percent of kids. Our goal's gonna be to get every kid where they need to get and at least see them grow, uh, over the course of the year. So that, that's one specific. So yeah, those are embedded in our one plan.
As long as you have some specific targets that you can hold yourself accountable at the end of the year, you and your team can circle back and say, we set this goal and it's not again a gotcha moment, but it's a reflection. What you could have done better if you didn't achieve it, or if you reached it and exceeded it, it's cause for celebration.
Absolutely.
So, uh, just so you have that, it was not reflected in your, uh, presentation out here. I'm glad that you
Yep.
had that out there, Ron. Uh, and last thing quickly since I, uh, we have you here. How is your after-school enrichment, uh, going on? I think you were one of the schools that were added.
We were added.
And how is that being received by the community? I know you had a church out there that was providing that service. Uh, how is that competing with that?
So that's one of the struggles that we've had this year. We have, uh, a lot of, um, interest in it. Uh, we still have not had anybody willing to come and take the position to run it. And so we have not been able to start it. We've interviewed multiple times and people don't wanna take the position for whatever reason. And so unfortunately, like, we have it, we have a waiting list and we have people ready to go, uh, once that starts. Uh, but we can't find a consistent way to keep it open. Um, we've had staff willing to say, hey, I can do this day or this day, um, to kinda supplement it. Uh, but then we get to a Wednesday where we have a staff meeting and then we have no staff to do it.
Yeah, I mean, you can't do that.
Correct.
You know, one day we are open and one day you're closed.
Correct. And so that, that, we're, we're still trying. Um, you know, every Tuesday and Thursday, I look forward to that HR email and say, hey, you have an applicant. And, um, we did get an applicant and then, you know, the person that applied this past week, you know, said that, oh, well, I didn't realize that it was only for our position. I'm looking for a full eight-hour position. And so I can't, I can't take that job.
So it's not up and running right now?
It is not. We have the space. We have everything ready to go. It's kinda like our preschool. We just have to get a person to run it.
It's a consistent barrier challenge.
Yeah. And we have, again, we have the staff willing to support as secondary and third people to be there and provide interventions and provide engagement opportunities and those types of things. Uh, but we just have not been able to fill that coordinator role so that we can have a consistent operational day-to-day of it.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback and also thank you for sharing with us what you need, uh, as far as the other position.
Yep.
Uh, we have so many competing interests
Absolutely.
in our school district right now. And I'm sure every, uh, school would appreciate a position like that. I had a teacher, uh, tell me yesterday at the town hall meeting that they would like two teachers in every classroom. And I wish we can provide that, two teachers in every classroom, but we have a pot of money and that's all. And I know like we had a conversation, you and I did last year about the TLC position in your school when it was cut half-time and we wanted to make sure that you are restored full-time and we got that there.
Yep.
But that position was put in there so they are teacher learning coaches in the classroom. So i- it's not for all the other purposes that sometimes get thrust on them, but their primary focus is to ensure that us two, that our teachers receive high-quality support, uh, in instruction out there.
It's good for us to hear what you wish you could have. I mean, it helps us to know for planning for the future and rethinking how we're doing things. So thanks for asking.
Yeah. And, um, thank you for, uh, you know, your candidness out here and, uh, owning the data. It's, and also thank you for saying that you are not going to be here next year. And, uh, we are going to hold you to that, that we are not going to see you next year. So, um, there is a sense of urgency, uh, you know, that has been conveyed by the board. And, uh, you see in your data that says it's year zero and that goes for you and the Martinez school too. And year zero, you can, if you come out of it at the center this year, you don't have to be in that accountability clock. And if you go on that accountability clock, it's a lot harder getting out of it. So this is your opportunities, having that sense of urgency there. And there is a lot of support that we are providing to, uh, Audubon more than what other typical schools are getting and your, uh, uh, Ms. Callback would be able to provide, talk to you about the wraparound services that the board approved. That I don't know, think that, that it has still reached to your school level yet, but you should probably see that at some point in time. Which is having a whole, uh, outside group of support coming to your classrooms and schools to support your teachers. So, um, uh, and with all the supports and resources in place comes the accountability piece that we turn around and hold each other, each other accountable for the sake of our students. We can't have sixty-three percent of our students, at least in one year where, where we saw that are not, um, in the red out there. Okay. That's all I have. Any other quick feedback that you guys have? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We normally do these by area, but with the ever juggle and, uh, some pre-planned vacations, I am proud to introduce, uh, Tara Berry from Martinez. Darren Joyner is the area superintendent. Tara was very ready to go to tell people how ready she is to put Martinez back on the right side of the map. So, um, she's always very ready to go. So we're super excited for this pre-.
Thank you. Welcome. And, uh, before you, are you going to introduce her?
Yeah, really quick.
Okay. And maybe she can give a background. I think she's a new principal at the Martinez. Maybe you can give a background on what your history was previously. Maybe you can give a background on what your history was previously in other districts and then transition.
Actually, there you go, he just teed it up for you. But Tara Berry, brand-new principal here to Martinez Elementary School in the northeast side of District eleven. Really excited for her to present to you today with her expertise and an experience of what she's bringing to the table at Martinez. A lot of exciting things that are going to be happening to improve not only the academic achievement and growth, but you know, from my experience at Jenkins, just knowing what Martinez is in that part of our district. That family feel, that community support, bringing that back to that lighthouse school. So Tara Berry.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for showing up and for all of your, your input and support. It's really nice to be part of D eleven where there's that, that balance of supporting instructional philosophy with also the philosophy of values and how we treat people and show up for people and support people. It's, it's a really beautiful balance. I'm happy to be part of the team. I am new to D eleven and a new principal in D eleven, but this is my twelfth year as a principal. There was a year in between there where I explored some opportunities at a central office level and then a director level. It's too far from kids. And so I, I come from Dallas, Texas, from Dallas I S D, one of the largest urban school districts in the nation. And I have worked in elementary primarily. I've also served in high school and middle school. And so I'm just lucky to have had a lot of opportunities and a lot of chances to grow. And, and I'm happy to be here.
Welcome to District eleven.
Thank you, thank you so much. So it's a, it's a different position for me because I am, am brand-new, right? And so I have taken a lot of time to learn and explore. I'm an observer, learner, connector. And so what that means is I observe and I learn, do the digging. And then I try to connect the right people to the right resource so we can maximize our outcomes. So Martinez is a high-priority improvement school. I was actually excited that there wasn't a protest to over point nine of a point, right? To, to push them up because I think it, looking at the data long-term, there's a, a need and an urgency that being a high priority provides. And, and so we are where we are and we have infinite potential and that's what we want to tap into. So I put on here our vision and our mission because one of the first things that we did as a team was to rethink. Who are we, where do we come from and where do we want to go? And so my, my, my whole team, our paras, our, our staff, everybody worked together. And we did some design thinking work and some vision and mission work. And we came up with our new vision, which would be empowering a community of innovative and creative learners. And then we wanted our mission quick, sharp and simple. Something that you can remember, that we can refer back to and not just something that's big on the ball, that is unrelatable sometimes, sorry. And so our mission is to embrace, engage and empower. And that's not just our students, that's our teachers, our paras and our community. And so everything that I have to say today is linked to all, all of those. So here's our data story. With our five essentials, there's been a continuous ask or version of data. And those data tell us that we need, we have areas of opportunity for growth. There's been some discontent with our teachers about the effectiveness that they're seeing in their leader, the collaboration that they're feeling among one another. And what supportive environments look like and what ambitious instruction looks like. It's interesting to me that involved families is low on this because there's not a day that goes by that I don't see at least ten or fifteen highly-involved parents. We had a library full of our P T A in our sack last night until seven-thirty, working through some things with, with laughter, joy and excitement. So that one's a little confusing to me, but I'm also learning that we have like, you know, the ten percent that hold ninety percent. So we're, we're working on growing that and really getting to know every student by face, by name, by family, by strength and by opportunity for growth. And when we approach the whole community like that, my goal and the goal of our team working together is to get a lot more green on this. And at the very least, to show growth. But we've been intentional in embedding practices all the way through our one plan to make sure that everything is intertwined and integrated in, in a way that seems like, oh, that makes sense. And, and so it doesn't seem like an extra thing. So with our district benchmark data from Galileo for the past couple of years, there was a significant drop in math performance from twenty-twenty-one of twenty-two point four, four-two percent. I'm the data nerd, so I will put decimals in often, sorry. And then we had a slight drop in E L A. When I look at these though, anything under eighty causes alarm. Because for every student that is achieving, there's a family in my mind that I'm having to face saying that we are failing your child. Your child is not meeting their maximum potential. And so anything under eighty is starkly alarming to me. And I really want a hundred percent. So we're, we're working on that. So we see that we have some drops. I'm not going to say it's because of COVID. I'm not going to say COVID didn't have an impact. But in, in COVID, in the height of COVID, I was at a turnaround school. We moved from being ranked one forty-six out of one forty-seven to eighty-three in a year, mostly virtual. So I, I know it hadn't been done. I don't know what was done here. And I don't know what was done in Martinez. And then there's a lot of things I'm learning and there's a lot that I know that I don't know. But I'm just, we are where we are and we're going to take it and say, okay, what did we do well? What can we do better next time? And so looking at our star out of, above grade level, we did third, fourth and fifth with intention. We understand that in all of our assessments, we are going to try to get everybody in and get a benchmark of where everyone is. We, we have some continued recovery from pre-COVID levels. We've got over half of Martinez readers and mathematicians ending the school year last year at or above grade level. Great, now what are we going to do for the others? And how can we capitalize on what we did last year that worked well? How can we rethink it and approach it differently to maximize those outcomes even more? With Akadents reading, which is formerly Dibbles, we were, again, intentional. We wanted to get a level for all of our kids. We know that if we have, if we're scoring at forty-one, that we have foundational issues. And so we wanted to be really intentional about identifying the foundational levels of all of our students. So that in our win time, what I need now, our intervention time, we can be very strategic about how we approach our kids. And, and I needed a full understanding of if I needed to pivot funds or staffing thoughts and focuses in order to best meet the needs. So we hit everybody. And so I'm happy that we've got sixty-nine percent for our B O Y. I will tell you right now that it's already grown. We're progress monitoring bi-weekly. And for our higher, high-needs kids, monthly for all kids. And our teachers just finished, and I got pictures, putting up our data walls, which is kind of tedious. But there's something really impactful about touching something that represents a student and moving it upward or moving it down. And it, I've just found it super motivating. So we're at a start that I feel like is a good springboard. Our goal is just to keep going. Like really, really, we want a hundred of our kids reading at or above grade level or showing a year of growth, period. That's what we want to see. We want everybody there. We don't want to leave anyone behind, everyone reaching their maximum potential. And so we look at our Akadents versus our C Mass, meeting or exceeding grade level. Martinez consistently shows a big gap here. Akadents is saying, we're doing great. And then we take C Mass, just kidding. And, and, and it's funny to put these side by side because they're not measuring the same thing. And I just want to name that. Akadents is measuring foundational reading skills. And that's great that we're scoring fairly well here. Foundational reading skills are the bare minimum for approaching C Mass, right? It's that learning to read versus reading to learn. And just because you can read at grade level doesn't mean that you can read, comprehend and then apply the needed skills to do what C Mass is asking us to do. To do what we're being asked to do in the world every day, which is take our, our metacognition and our schema and apply it to new situations and learn and grow and think differently. And yes, C Mass, I'm not going to teach to a test, but I want to teach my kids what might, what they might see. How might they recognize what they're being asked and how might they approach it with success? So in our school, do I look at question stems? How is C Mass asking this? What are the misconceptions that we're seeing? How can we approach those and front-load those to our students? Yes, is that cheating? Absolutely not. I got syllabus for every college course I ever took. I knew exactly what I was going to be assessed on. I knew, I knew that you had to attend the college courses to understand the teaching style and what the professor wanted and then deliver in that way, right? It's the same with my job. I didn't choose what my rating, like my measure of evaluation is going to be, but I know it. And so if I know it and I'm familiar with it and I can work with it and Darren can keep giving me the foundational skills that I need to be successful in D eleven language, then I can succeed. And that's the goal for all of our kids. So we put this here to say, yes, there's a big gap and we know it. We know they're assessing different things, no excuses, but we're going to assess both things all the time and try to close those gaps.
I want to thank Tara for calling it out. We've been talking as a team since these started on the disconnect between Akadents and C Mass. And that sometimes we've been selling it as in, well, there are bright spots. But the, the fact that she tested all the way up through fifth grade gave us the clarity to see. Well, what we've always known is that they are testing something different. However, and, and I'm fine if a sixty-nine in Akadents really means thirty-five in C Mass. But I want to stop talking about a sixty-nine in Akadents as a good news story. If a sixty-nine equals thirty-five, because that's the bridge that we have to walk and that's a crosswalk we have to talk, then that's fine. But really, the question that we have to ask ourselves is what is the missing connection between this learning to read and reading to learn? And it's not teaching to the test. It's the rigor and how it is that we're asking ourselves to learn to read, such that we can read to learn, right? What's that?
It's the critical thinking skills of looking at the problem in front of you, looking at what you're trying to solve for and, and get to it.
Right, and so I just really appreciate both Darren and Tara, because it's come up about three or four different times. And we finally got to a space where we thought we had the right information to be able to tell the story with the right two representatives there, to be able to convey, this is why you're seeing that difference. And we seek to understand that in a way that they become both leading and lagging for one another. We should be able in the future, especially as we're adding specific pre-K classrooms, to identify children in power school and follow them across the arc of their career. And then be predictive of what we're seeing in Akadents to what we will see in C Mass. We, this shouldn't, can you go back to slide? I'm sorry. It shouldn't, this should not be a surprise. It should either be predictive that that is the equivalence or this is the corrective action that one should inform the other. Right now, we report on them as if they are just two different happenstances in the observation that we're making today. And so we will get too predictive of the relationship between us.
Having said that, when you look at twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen and having such a high Akadents score and then twenty-twenty-one high Akadents score, something's different about the C Mass mastery when it drops so far below. So if it's back to the...
So this should be prescriptive.
Right.
What, what are we doing? We're having high Akadents, it's not translating as kids progress through the system. Because you could follow this and we can break them down by grade year. But it tells the same story by grade year.
I, I'm sure it does, but I, given what you've said, I don't know that it can be predictive in the sense that the critical thinking skills, thinking skills, evaluation analysis and all of the rest of it. Kids can read the words, but as you're saying, reading to, to learn, it goes back to the instruction. It goes back to what is it that we've set for goals? What is it? And that's what you're working on.
Right.
So I, I guess I need more time to see how it's going to be predicted.
So, so do we.
Yeah.
I mean, it, that's absolutely right, Director.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, that's absolutely right, Director Bankes thinks. It can't be completely predictive. I think what we mean by saying, like connecting it to the word predictive is that we're looking at it a way and really you have to look at it in terms of other assessments. So if I'm a principal in a school, we report out on this basis. This is our major data for early literacy. But at the same time, a principal in a school, working with teachers and teachers in a classroom are looking at early literacy assessments such as Akadents. Making sure that students are meeting goals there, so they're reading or learning to read. At the same time, they're getting instruction in standards outside of foundational literacy standards. More of the critical thinking opportunities. So they're starting to get that instruction. If they're not getting that instruction and we're not assessing on that, so that would come up in our wonders curriculum in units, studies and daily tasks within that, writing samples, reading samples. If they're not doing those things simultaneously and we're not actually seeing how they're doing in standards outside of the foundational skills, then we won't be able to see them, by the time they get to third grade, actually be able to become proficient in C Mass. So predictive to a sense that we're using other, that we're giving full instruction and those opportunities and we're using other assessments that we wouldn't necessarily report out in this format.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what you get for being helpful.
No, I mean, a, a process, a process of inquiry is always welcome. And so, I mean, if we don't, if we, if we continue moving forward as, assuming that we are all meaning and saying the same things because we're using the same words, then well, you know what assuming does, right? And so it's, it's unhelpful. So I appreciate that. And it also helps me to think through, how do I explain that to a parent?
Exactly.
And how can I say, when we're seeing this, this is what we're going to do and this is why. I'd like to have a, a more clear bridge. I, I, in all my years of experience, I haven't seen one where you can have that direct link of early literacy to application of literacy. But I think that we can, we can start studying trends. I think there's opportunity there. I don't have the answer yet. But I, I, I always enjoy the inquiry. Okay, so with our C Mass, I'm looking at first at literacy, partially because I was a lit teacher and I'm just gonna love my E L A first. I could focus on the red, I could focus on the blue. But what makes me excited is the level of the yellow, orange and green. Those are my bubbles. Those are my areas of opportunity where we can, we can really hone in and go student by student, go grade level by grade level, teacher by teacher and identify strengths and areas of growth and really zone in and focus and give our key, our teachers first and our kids simultaneously what they need so that they can jump. That's not to say that I am not going to have intensive interventions for our fifteen percent in the most recent year that are not meeting expectations at all, they're not partially approaching or approaching. They're, you know, they're the ones that we worry about falling in the cracks. They're that, they're the kids that keep me up at night. But equally, that seventeen and that thirty-two percent keep me up at night. I'm like, what's that one right thing that we can do for these kids to help them feel success and to motivate them to continue to come to school and try something new every single day? Deal with the discomfort of not fully understanding, be vulnerable, ask for help and then stick with it even when it's hard and you want to quit. And that's what we ask our teachers to do and that's what we ask our kids to do. So like, how can we do that one next right thing? So I'm, our scores aren't great and it's crazy that they're not because we have a talent, a huge talent pool in our building. I think our average years of experience is about seventeen at Martinez. And they're so committed and our kids are showing up and they're ready to learn. There's some systems that we're missing. And we spent this first quarter collaboratively building these systems. But we have a lot of area for, opportunity for growth. And our goal is, we don't want to just, I don't want to sound arrogant, I just want to sound ambitious. But we don't want to just go up one point and be at improvement. We'd like to take a big jump and get at least fourteen percent. We'll say every day fourteen percent. Who are your fourteen percent you're going to move today? And go straight up to performance. Because this school should be performing in the top of the thirty-four elementaries that we have. in D eleven. And I believe that, that with time and continued support, that we'll be able to do that. So, um, this paired with our math data, which is worse, um, shows that we, we're, we haven't been performing well for quite some time. And they have twenty-three percent of Martinez students that are meeting grade level expectations in math. It's down twelve percent from the previous year. Seventy-seven percent of Martinez students are below grade level expectations. I say that because if you're not green or blue on this stack, you have not met grade level expectations. It's great that you're getting there and partially approaching. It's great that you're almost there and approaching, but really seventy-seven percent of our kids are not at grade level expectations according to CDE. Is this one piece of data? Yes. Does it always reflect the most accurate thing? No, it's like a snapshot. It's like. I, now I tell our kids this, I was like, look, show up and do your best. This shows how you did on one day during a few hours, one time. We have all this other data to show who you are and how you can do. But we also know that you have the tools to grow. So I tell the kids and the teachers, once you meet my bar, it only goes up. So buckle up and get ready cuz we're gonna grow a lot this year. So we have a lot of room to grow. We're in the bottom forty percent, both in like forties of the state, um, in both, in both literacy and, and math. And that's just not okay. And my teachers don't feel like it's okay. They're not complacent. They don't think it's okay. And they're, um, very open to feedback as long as they have a voice. Um, feedback and coaching and, um, side-by-side planning and so that is where we are getting to. So again, forty-one out of a hundred points, yikes. And we had ninety-five percent participation, so it's not a fluke. Like this is a pretty good representation of, of how our students are doing at this time. And when I look at what's even more alarming than the forty-six percent of academic achievement, it's only thirty-seven point five percent of our kids grew one full year. Right? Like academic growth is like one full year, right? That doesn't mean that a, a student that comes to Martinez for, on day one, that's two years behind, we expect to get at grade level by the end of the year, but we want, we're gonna push and we want them to show one year's growth. We want every minute that they spend in the building. We want them to see, feel, first feel seen, heard and valued so they feel safe, right? And then we wanna help them meet their potential. And if they're not getting a whole year, then we've got problems. So then that leads us to our challenges. So we had limited growth and or decreases in reading and math across multiple measures, not just CMASS. We had limited GT students exceeding grade level expectations. Now let me say this. I know that your levels of giftedness are not always means, that does not mean that you're like a straight A student. We have some students showing giftedness in mathematics, some showing giftedness in, in reading language arts. We have some that are twice exceptional and are excelling in math, also identified as having dyslexia. Throw in some ADHD and that was me as a kid, right? But if tier one, if our tier one students are not getting it and they're not at least meeting grade level expectations or exceeding it, our instruction should have paused right then and there. Said, okay, if, if our high performers are not getting it, if our kids with the potential to get it are not getting it, we've missed it. And so we need to pause there and go back and think, okay, where did, where did the misconception start? Where do we need to start? So they put that there and I say that not to say that I have unrealistic expectations based on how you qualify in one measure. But I also say, when I delivered instruction, if, if, if Darren is usually the one that's gonna get it and I ask him for a check for understanding and he's lost, I know I have not done my job as a teacher and I need to roll back. Why are we lost? Let's go back over to this, you know? And so that's why that is there. Um, ineffective teacher coaching and support resulting in low rigor and misaligned instruction. I am not trying to say anything ill about any of my predecessors. I'm saying it didn't work. Because teachers did not feel like they were coached. I interviewed, sat down with every single staff member and had one-on-ones before school started. They didn't feel like they were coached in a way that was helpful. Doesn't mean they weren't. There wasn't efforts. And low rigor and misaligned instruction. When I go into classrooms the first two weeks of school and the teacher is absorbing ninety percent of the air and the students are getting, like they're sitting, very compliant. That doesn't show me that they're engaged and that it's rigorous, right? So our goal is like really having students reading, writing, thinking and speaking a hundred percent of the time or as close to that as possible during the lesson. Because, you know, twenty's plenty. Direct instruction shouldn't go past twenty minutes cuz everybody's gonna get bored, which means I need to filter my air, um, a little bit. And then also what came across in those interviews and in our five E was limited trust. There was some staff-to-staff, um, trust that didn't exist. They didn't feel like they could go to one another without judgment. And staff to administration, there was some mistrust. That was before my time. I've allowed my teachers to tell me their story. And my only hope from that is to try to grow and exhibit behaviors that build trust and don't bust trust. So in response to our challenges, we've, we're, we've decided to focus on engagement, which is the first level of best-first instruction. Which was a collaborative campus-based decision to step one step back because they had selected phase two, which is planning for learning instead of planning for teaching. But I feel like if we don't have that trust and those relationships and those tools needed for engagement, that was a little too fast, too soon. So I just presented what does best-first instruction look like and where do we really feel like we can, we are and where do we need to start? And this is how our team landed. So engagement, data-driven instruction and collaborative coaching model. And the coaching goes both ways. They give me just as much feedback, if not more, than I give them. And, you know, and that's, that's how I grow as a leader. And our parents give me feedback and that's how I grow as a leader. Darren gives me feedback. Nicole, Akmar, everybody from the VAPA team, our literacy department, our math department, Paul and I were texting earlier. Um, arranging some more learning walks. So, you know, feedback is reciprocal. It's gotta go both ways. Even our kids give, gave me feedback. And they're like, announcements are too long. Okay, let's calm down. We can do that. So, um, that's where we landed and we've tried to embed those into major action steps and then we have a third because we're a little bit of an outlier. So our North Star at Martinez is our community and our kids that we serve. But they're not inseparable. Our community and our kids are like one. Because if we're not, if we don't have every student by face, by name, by family, if we don't know our families that are coming in our doors, we're missing the boat. Right? Because we can't continue on that assumption that parents are doing it at home. That's a parent job. Or the school is doing it and it's not, it's the school's job. Like they're our kids. Like I, I told, told Lauren, I was like, they're mine. Monday through Friday for eight hours a day, each day, they're mine. And so.
And I said, sometimes I'm so glad that.
Right? And so with all of our parents and our kids, like our North Star is really treating each and every single member of our community as if they're family. That doesn't mean we're always functional. Doesn't mean we don't like have the cousin that like you wish would be absent and never is. You know, on, at, at any level, but that we are family and that so that we're gonna engage in that trust and vulnerability to spar and disagree in a healthy way, to give feedback that's difficult, to have conversations that are difficult. But our North Star is our community. We have teachers there that have been there since the building opened. We have teachers that are alumni students from Martinez that came home to give, to pay it forward. And so our North Star is our Martinez community. And, and so that's what, what leads and drives our decision-making. That one. Okay. So our major improvement strategy, one is best-first instruction, planning for learning. Also, one phase, one lesson, right? So we do want to plan for learning. And we realize first that you have to have that foundation, right? If our foundation is made of straws, the house is not gonna stand. So our root cause is identified prior to my arrival and then since is that the instruction's lacking rigor, alignment and engagement. And then there's inconsistent data monitoring and data-informed instructional adjustments. So we weren't looking at data enough to see how we were doing and how our kids were doing and what changes we needed to like look in the mirror and say, okay, we need to approach this differently so that our kids have a better chance for different outcomes. So with that, sorry for all the print. We're, we're going to engagement first. So what I've added in here are some action steps and then the measure, like how are we tracking to make sure that we're really doing it? Um, one of my mentors always said, you have to inspect what you expect. And you have to give it attention and your wall should speak to what's important to you. Um, so here are ours and I'm gonna kind of go through them and then if, stop for, for questions there. But our professional development opportunities are focused on best-first instruction, engagement and data-driven instruction. And our measure for that is our professional development, um, schedule, but also the feedback that our teachers give um, after professional development is delivered. Like, was it effective? Was it ineffective? How could we have made it better? Do you need follow-up? Um, district and campus-based common interim assessments and common formative assessments. So we're using the tools in Eureka with, um, with our, our STAR data. Oh, we had a great training today on all these fantastic reports that align in so many ways. And I'm so stoked to share those with our teachers. Acadians and then campus-based assessment data. So kind of looking like, are we connected? Are we aligned? And what is our data telling us to move forward? We created a what I need now or a win intervention block paired with, um, intervention and data monitoring tools. So what that looks like on a day-to-day is there's a win block of time for fifty minutes every single day. Our teachers have our highest priority students that are the lowest performing and need the most because they know them best and they can reach them best. Also, they're responsible for them, right? Like they're, that's their data, that's. So they're working with them. We have interventionists working with our, uh, tier one and our, um, our tier one students. We have tu- tutors helping. We have our instructional coach helping. We have our gifted and talented teacher on board and she takes her identified students as well as our potentials. Um, students are high-performing students to expand, right? Give them that chance to grow and think and apply critical skills and touch on the next grade level. So this is happening every single day during their win time. We measure that with our data monitoring tools, our STAR, our Acadians, our exit tickets and our common formative assessments. So we're saying, when they go to win, what's the result when they're back in their regular classroom? And we were also really intentional about providing a really detailed version of what does the literacy block look like? What does the math lit block look like? And are we allowing for small group instructional time there? So we're getting there. We're not quite there yet, but our, our deal is that there will be three opportunities for small group support for every student every day. Um, we are doing instructionally, we, we built an instructional delivery checklist focused on engagement and meaningful checks for understanding. They, my teachers needed to know the difference between coaching and evaluation. So we aligned it to our one plan. Um, we aligned it to Miranda. We didn't want any outliers or anything different. And we use the same feedback form for them in addition to evidence that we grab. So they're very comfortable with us being in the classroom. My instructional coach and I have a schedule we set up, so she sees who I'm seeing and I track what feedback I'm giving. Uh, Darren, Jamie can also give feedback. Um, Paul, when he comes, can give feedback. And we make sure that our, you can see the last bit of feedback that we're given. Our teacher was given and are working on and when they got their follow-up, did they meet it or are we still working on it? So I'm not asking them to grow in one way, Darren asking them to grow in another way, my instructional coach asking them to grow in another way. And at the same time, I can also have that conversation with my, uh, teaching and learning coach and say, hey, Sabrina, this is what was the most high-leverage action step for them. But it would be great if you could partner with them on, on these things and, and help build capacity here as well. But know that this is the, the high priority move. So I have lots of trackers and I'm a nerd like that, but it seems to work for us. And then we do calibration walks weekly with the teaching, learning coach and the principal.
Can I ask you to go back again? How is it that you're aligning all these folks to come in and do the, the walkthroughs?
The staff, well, a lot of the staffing was already there and then just with central support, Darren comes weekly.
Right, how is it that?
So we, we have a tracker that we're using through the area superintendents. Nicole's put it together in conjunction with, uh, with Tamara. We're, I can share with you offline if you'd like to, we can give you an example, but we're specifically coordinating. So I'll use just, you know, uh, I'll go to one of my thousands of transportation analogies. We have to get all this coordinated because the point of impact being the teacher can't have inconsistencies in the message. There are different levels of coaches who are providing different levels of services, but all incoordinated effort. And so we are literally tracking that by a massive spreadsheet and it will identify, we'll be able to pull trends and see that we only go to, um, uh, we, we have a tendency to go to elementary schools named after presidents more than we do to ones not named after. It's obviously a false position.
We'll find a time and.
But we want, I'll be, I'd love to be able to show that to you. It's just, and you'll see when we get to the second part of the evening on the continuous improvement cycles, the depth that we are trying to bring to this game. This idea of just being observational, nobody wants to be the smartest person in the room that doesn't impact an outcome for a student. We have to turn the smartness that we have into action. And in some cases, that means sometimes we have to stop talking about how smart we are and just go get it. And so even to Principal Ford's comments of, I missed some observation today cuz I had to deal with the discipline issue. We have to be able to overcome that to get to where we wanna get to. So I, I'm looking forward to show you that.
But I would say to that also, from, from the go, I've had support from Darren, Jamie, our area instructional coach. Um, my teaching and learning coach is also new to D eleven, but we had background together in a New York philosophy aligned. And so Jamie was really, I'm quick to ask for help. I don't like to not know. There's a lot I still don't know. I don't like to not know or I don't like to not know who to go to. So I call for help all the time. And so, um, I ask a lot of questions at meetings. I try to grab you after the meeting, set up a time where we can meet. Um, I, I just, um, I'm, I'm rebuilding like a community that I had built over eighteen years in Dallas. And so I'm trying to rebuild that, but everyone that I've, I've reached out to with a question or has made time. And sometimes it was not exactly when I wanted it, but everyone has made time and shown up. And so I feel very, very supported in that way. My learning coach and I do at least one calibration walk a week. Really, we try to do one every day. So what that means is after we pop our head in and say good morning to everybody, because that's important, right? Like I see you, how are you this morning? Um, and get a quick look at their learning targets, talk about those. We have some tools that we use, some coaching tools that we use that have common language. And so we go in and we observe together. And then we just step out and they know, like if we just come in with our paper, we're just, it's for us, it's not for them. What do you think the highest leverage action step would be? Would, is it on the management trajectory? Is it on a rigor trajectory? Where would you start? What would it be? And then we share out our thinking on that so that we can better calibrate and align. And it's not a right or wrong. It's like, what did you see? I need to understand her lens. She needs to understand my lens. And then Darren and Jamie come in with a whole other lens and then we learn and grow from that. But we calibrate and align outside of the teacher before we go in and give them feedback so that we're not giving conflicting messages. So it's not like, well, he said and then you said and who? I don't know. I'm just not gonna do anything cuz I don't know which one of you to listen to. And so, um, that was a practice that I brought from, from Dallas, from having, being the only, being the principal with no APs. And, um, but having district support and then being a principal that had three APs and it really needing to be tight and succinct. It was just coaching and mentoring I've learned along the way and it's worked and just gonna push it forward and adapt it how we need to to make it, um, replicate that success at Martinez. And then we do learning, we are, in quarter two, we are gonna start doing, um, learning walks with our teachers. We're gonna start strategically with our building leadership team and our visual and performing arts visioning team. And then, cuz they give us a lot of feedback and there's a higher level of trust. And then we're gonna be sure that every teacher does a learning walk observing other teachers with our, with our tool in hand so that they can go through the process of observing and trying to come up with feedback in a way that's helpful. And I found that that normalizes the process of receiving feedback as well. And it makes it a little, the pill a little easier to swallow. So our big goal, and I don't like sixty percent, but we wanna be both rigorous and reasonable, right? We want to get sixty percent of our students in third through fifth grade to meet or exceed standards in both math and ELA as measured by CMASS because that will take us to the performance level with a cushion. And that's our biggest goal. I want eighty before I'm not gonna grow more gray hair. I want a hundred, really. But we're gonna start with something that we, we feel like can be attainable and, and continue moving upward from there. By my calculations, if we grow fourteen percent every year, we'll be in performance next year and then we'll stay in performance and at the end of year three, we'll be at that eighty percent that I want us to be.
I'll be performance with distinction, so.
We're gonna get there. We're gonna get there, yeah, for sure. Any questions on major improvement strategy one or feedback, I'm open to feedback, I love feedback.
Well, I appreciate the thoroughness of it, I think you paint a picture out there that is. I have no doubts that if we're doing all those calibration walks that you're talking about, the learning walks on a daily basis and providing that feedback. That's going to pay dividends down there.
And I will say again, I, the first quarter was about building the trust and the relationships and ma- making sense of these tools to our teachers before we show up and do it. And so. Now is when we're getting, we're doing it more and more, it was a lot of calibration at the beginning, I let my learning coach go in more. And I would observe, I've observed everybody once, but it was on a informal level. Now we're gonna start formalizing it a little better. So our second improvement strategy is on that collaborative and coaching culture. Because we can't do all these data-driven instructional decision-making things if we're not comfortable giving and receiving feedback. And so that collaborative coaching culture is not just me collaborating and coaching my teachers. It's all of us collaborating and coaching together. They coach, they coach me as much as I coach them. Like if we are trying to develop an expert in the building that can be the go-to for everything. Instead of sending a whole group of teachers, we send a select group of teachers that are showing interest and willing to own it. And then they come back and work with the the learning coach and I and whatever other central supports we need to get a clear understanding. And then they pilot and then they go through, okay, here's the problems I encountered, and then they're delivering. Professional development during PLC or or staff meetings to our teachers. So it's not just this guy saying all these things, she's not even in the classroom anymore, she's never taught Colorado, she doesn't know. It's their peers getting it and then they know who they can go to with lower stakes and lower risk to get support. And then they tell us if they need more. So due to the, our root causes are due to the inconsistent systems and coaching. Um, they had a principal there for seventeen years that left, new principal came in in COVID. And it was kind of a weird hybrid COVID situation. Now they've got me, there are damaged relationships among amongst staff members and um, it it impacts collaboration and mindset. So again, one of the first things we did was we created our own shared agreements. And before we sit down for coaching our meetings, we we put them up again, we have them for students, peers and community. And today's for our data meeting that they had without me was embracing a growth mindset. And so that means accepting feedback, assuming positive intent and learning from mistakes and model failing forward for our students. And so we have six like core values that we stick to all the time. And then that's the common language that we can use to to correct each other. So that was one of the first things that we did. And then they cr- they craved consistent and collaborative feedback from the TLC and the admin. They didn't want us to come in and tell us what was going wrong. They wanted us to go in and say, hey, I noticed that that you're doing, you're implementing Eureka with fidelity. My wondering is, is how might we increase engagement while you're doing that? And what tools do you need to make that happen? And then chew on it and think about it and then they come back and say, okay, I need this, I'm like, great. We can provide this at this point, but what can you do tomorrow? What can you do in your instruction tomorrow that'll make that engagement a little bit better? And so we try to give those bite-sized feedback. And they want their voice in it, right? Like that doesn't feel comfortable, okay, tell me your ideas. Our desired outcome is that we're gonna increase engagement and what ways do you feel comfortable doing it tomorrow? Because we need it tomorrow. Um, and then our teachers need coaching on how to plan, how to do the backward planning. How to take our amazing quarterly overviews and unpack them to a day-to-day. And think through what are the prerequisite skills that I may or may not know that they don't have? What what routines do I need to build in, what front-loading do I need to do, what mini lessons need to be embedded? Where might I need to focus my small group instruction before we get to this level? They've not had a whole lot of really strategic systems put in place that aid them in doing that in a consistent way. So we're building it. Um, on the delivery, we're trying to get away from holding a textbook in our hands and just going through it. And using it as a great tool, because Eureka is great, it really is. But, not but, and, and students need additional time and practice doing things, not just inside of a book. And so we're working on how can we make that happen. Engagement. Who's doing the answering of the questions? Is Darren answering ninety-five percent of the questions? While Jason sits there quietly, very confused, but doesn't want anyone to know?
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically. You know, are 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 they talking with one another, are they reporting back what their peer said? Are they jotting their their notes down on guided notes? Are they answering, writing their answer first and thinking about it and then holding up their whiteboard and having discussion? Are students showing and telling, this is how I did this and this is why I did these steps, are they verbalizing their thinking? We're a long way from where I know our team can get with that, but we're working on some small engagement strategies and when they're best to use. Feedback and uh, student feedback and goal setting. This goes two ways. Students telling us what worked and what didn't. And then also giving students quick feedback on what they did and allowing them to participate in goal-setting conferences. Which is a big thing for quarter two for us. Because my goal is that this first round parent conferences is the only one ever at Martinez that happens while I'm there where the teachers are leading it. I want our kids leading it. Mom, this is where I am with reading, these are my goals, these are the things that I'm doing to try to get to them. Um, this is where I am at math, this is my goal, this is my non-academic goal, I'm blurting out too much in class. And so I'm gonna write my answers down or I'm gonna, I've decided that I should only share three times and so when I put three chips in a bucket, like I'm done. And I have to like share the air, whatever those are, letting the kids write them and then. Protecting some time to pause on all the new and assess and let kids think about and says, how am I doing? What am I doing that's helping, what am I doing that's hurting, right? And and move forward with that. And then communication with one another, how are we communicating, right? Because there is a big uh trend on my campuses of, I'm mad and I'm not gonna tell you about it, but I'm gonna tell everybody else. Well, it's not healthy, right? And then we're modeling that for our kids, we don't want that to happen. And so we're working on communication and how we communicate with our kids instead of telling them to stop running and stop talking in the hallway. Instead, we're saying, oh, I like how Nicole is walking in a straight line, she's modeling hallway behavior. She's being respectful to the learning environment and then they're all like, well, look at me, I can do that too. Right? That way we don't sound so much like Charlie Brown's teacher and they're they're seeking praise. We we walk around with Level Up bucks, Level Up is our theme this year. So they get Level Up loot for making good decisions, being helpful, going above and beyond. And so we're really trying to communicate that we see not just what they need to improve on, but what they're doing well. And so with that culture, we have a lot of steps um there as well. We we've already accomplished our strategic purpose and alignment. Our measure was our new mission, vision, core values and staff agreements. Um, we're working with K- the Kagan Collaborative Learning and the Seven Keys for Success. I'm still learning Kagan, I have different language, same strategies, different language. So I didn't put a clear measure on that just yet. Because I I need more information to know what it is and what our teachers know and where they need support. So that one's to be determined. Quarterly climate surveys, um, we're sending one out on Friday, trying to align some of the questions to the five E. So I get in-house um info on how how I'm doing in an anonymous way. So I can move and pivot and my teachers feel like, you know, like if you're not brave enough to come to my open door. Sit in one of my weird chairs and talk to me or text me or call me. Then here's another way that you can do it, so we can pivot and not have a surprise orange and red five E outcome later is our goal. We're using our multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS, we're trying to develop our teachers on that and create a way to track. Well, first, our process is muddy, how we've done it before is not necessarily working. So working on systems for that and scenarios and what do you do if and when. And we had some of our first improved MTSS meetings this week. And then how are we tracking the plan, how can teachers track, how can we track, are they growing? Do we need to elevate this to additional things, are we seeing success? Um, we started with behaviors, um, because that was a huge thing with our staff, almost every staff member said. Voice, trust and student behavior, so we started with behavior plans. Man, this one little girl, she just gave me a run for my money. And um, and we try, we have tried a few different things. She's engaged in her learning now, she's running into school and almost knocks me over because she's so excited to be there. She's not harming her peers anymore, she is not like turning desks over anymore. And it was a lot of work with her family and a lot of work with our counselor and our social worker and our teachers and like all the staff that may have had her before. To get to that point, but we started with those behavior plans so we could see and track. Now we're moving on to the more academic as we have more data. Um, we're revamping our professional learning community uh protocols to focus on student learning needs. We're building that right now. Ideally, we want our PLCs to either be looking forward or looking back. So looking forward is looking at our quarterly overviews at a four-week mark, unpacking those. And and seeing where we need to go and then looking back, checking our data, how did we do and how do we need to revamp for the next four weeks? And I was just bugging Darren today about, I think it was like twenty, text twenty-five?
I can pass my phone around, they can read it?
Yeah. And and it makes him nervous because I write all over my desk and my table with my dry erase marker.
Looked like vandalism the first time.
So we're talking, we're thinking and I'm writing and I'm taking a picture like, this is what I want to make happen. I'm, I have so many ideas, but I wanted to share this with you before I erased it. Um, so we're looking at um, lots of different ways to make those PLC times owned by our teachers with structure. And accountability pieces that don't just feel like they're a piece of paper they're turning in that no one reads, right? And so we're we're building those and then regular feedback on classroom culture by the principal, teaching and learning coach and building leadership team. And um, that's gonna come with those learning walks, our building leadership team agendas and and uh minutes from our meetings that we make public. And then our campus survey data. And I'm always this much, sorry. And then our third one is a little bit, a little bit um different. So. We were accepted before my time to be an arts integration school. And some may say, why would you put this on top of your need to improve? But what's beautiful about this is D eleven was really strategic with their partnerships with arts integration and A plus schools. Has a beautiful longitudinal set of datas and those data say that it works. And it started out, its intention was to be a turnaround model. And it's adaptive and it is flexible and it. In addition to reading, writing, learning and speaking in the classroom, they're allowed to express what they know in other modalities. We're in zero-year planning, I'm still learning about it, our staff is still learning about it, but I'm just gonna name it. Our staff is unclear on how to execute arts into integration into core subjects. And still honor the time that it needs. Only a few staff members have been trained. So before they decided to pitch to apply to be an arts integration school. Which they chose to try to build enrollment and boost achievement. They did a pilot run, love pilot runs, like do a little tester before we disrupt everything, right? And we had a few teachers trained and then they had a small team that worked together and they had community support, they had campus support. You have to have eighty percent even to get put forth your application. So they're on board but unclear. Um, and then some of the worries that our staff is sharing with me is that they s- they don't want it to be an additional thing. They feel like there's a lot of new this year, you're, they're like Barry, you're new, Sabrina's new, superintendent's new, like strategies are new, like a lot of new. And we're like, hold up. So I, it's been really great working with um Nicole and Lori Lee. And the the visual and performing arts because they're very intentional, they already did the work of making sure that arts integration aligns with best-first instruction. They're um really making sure that it aligns with Kagan. They're really making sure that the enrichment and extension activities are embedded in the blueprints, they already exist. We're just not quite sure what to do with them yet. And I was very fortunate to go to North Carolina last week and I got a lot of training, I have more clarity. We're in our zero-year planning, we're not supposed to know exactly how it's gonna look for Martinez yet. But we do know if our kids can show us what they know in more ways than pen and paper. That that builds. A platform for processes, right? Of expressing what you know and connecting it to other things. And acquiring new knowledge and then deeply applying the knowledge that they do have. So we're not gonna be like a, like a baby fame, like Martinez is not just gonna ditch reading and math. And then we're gonna spend the whole day doing theater and art and dance. Yes, we're gonna do theater, yes, we're gonna do art, yes, we're gonna do dance. And all the things that, you know, already done, let's not forget PE, that is an expression of yourself is when you're an athlete. But. We're not gonna make it an additional, it's just gonna be a, another tool in our toolkit that will allow. And I think it's great because we have, we're like in this weird little spot where like D twenty is across the street and then. You know, all these charter systems, one with a huge banner, would love to disappear, that like you can see from our school, that's like a charter school. And and there's all these options around us and we're choice, right? So we need to grab a deep understanding of what visual and performing arts integration looks like to our core instruction. So that we can offer that choice and we can bring kids in. And you know, they can express themselves in different ways and gain confidence and then be more willing to try things in middle school. Or adapt to the things that they don't like, so my hope with it is that they don't say, I'm not good at math. But instead say, I approach math differently, right? Or math's not my favorite, but I know how to approach it in a way and I'm gonna use these things that I've learned at Martinez. To help me to access things differently. And so we have some action steps, but we're still in our zero-year planning. We've, we, the first one we've checked off, we have created our strategic pers- our purpose and created an identity, identity statement. We had two full days, it was, you came, it was, it was great, it was a lot of design thinking and um. Voices came out and trust was built up on those days and it really aligns to what we already did with our mission, vision and purpose. We're now looking at what does three-year implementation planning look like? What makes sense for where we are, what's gonna be a value add, what might we need to wait on? To to implement into year two and year three. We're meeting quarterly um with our. That Vapa Vision Teams, our VVT, um, with our Vapa support from central staff. To make sure that we understand how these quarterly blueprints are aligning and what are some things that they can try. They're on board with us for rebranding to, you know, make Martinez new, new and exciting and um. And something accessible, right? And uh, to bring people in and then also to make sure it aligns tightly with D eleven. So we don't want to be a separate outlier, we want to be a contributor in a different way. So we're meeting with them regularly. Those learning walks are happening with me right now and my instructional coach, like here's an opportunity when we were in this classroom that this could have been done. Here's an opportunity where this could have been done, so they're, they're showing me right now opportunities and then we're thinking through, where does that fall with our professional development plan? Where can we implement this in a way that is most meaningful? Um, and then we're starting those uh, as we build our professional learning communities, doing those deep dives. Which just feed MIS one and two. And then we're really working on building community partnerships and student mentoring. And so we want to bring. Artists and all the different modalities into the building to partner with our, we call them essentials, not specials anymore, right? Um, with our art teacher and teach students what it's like to try to be a, 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 an artist. In the way where I create art and that's how I sustain my living and and partner with them and teach them different tools. We want to bring, you know, people that do these things for a living in and partner with our kids. We also want to bring community members in that are in the Martinez community that can help us like add some curb appeal. Or, you know, add some different ways of partnering, clubs, enrichment opportunities, we're we're insured. But we just know we want more community in our school actively participating in our school and what we do and how we do it. And letting our kids get to know and see other adults that are not gonna grade them or make them clean their room, right? Um, we had a, one of our Vapa Vision teams mom said. It's really cool that my daughter got to meet with this engineer and he also told her, do not ever stop playing music. Because the best engineers I know have that outlet of music and also there's a lot of math in there you're not aware of, so just like stick with it. And so how cool that she wants to be. And so how cool that she wants to be an, an aeronautical engineer, but also is being told, don't stop playing the piano, right? And so those are the things that we want to bring in so it's more authentic. And we just know that with all of our support that we're being given, we may not hit every single goal that we want, but we're gonna grow this year and we're gonna get out of high priority improvement. And hopefully we can just do a little leap, get back into performance.
Thank you. Thank you for all the details you shared, I will start out with my thoughts and then open it up for the board too. This is kind of the first time I'm getting to interact with you in this uh formal setting, I did visit your school one of the days, but you were not at the school at that time, I think you were. I heard that you were on a, on a state or something like that. But I did get to see your teachers, but thank you for sharing the uh detail to which that the vision and the plan that you have for your school. And also that you are owning that data as it is right now, and you said right at the very beginning. Just contesting and getting that point nine of that SPF, maybe it's going to get you to that improvement category, but it's not really addressing the root causes that is behind the way you ended up. Uh, I appreciate all that information that you mentioned. All the thorough details that you're going through, I appreciate it, I don't have anything more to add that other than uh you are stepping into the school. That had this problems that the teachers have identified and said that they had some problems with leadership. I hope the, your staff feels the support that you are giving them on a daily basis now that they appreciate the. Observation cycles and all those things that you are doing and looks like you also have community engagement, uh active community that is supporting you. You have a active, you said that I think you had a PTA in SAC that supports you. So, yeah, any other board member comments or feedback on what, uh, the VAPA part of it, that do you feel like your school is ready? For up and to get that up and running in August of twenty twenty-three? You know, you said that your teachers have accepted it, but they still have some confusion how this is all going to end up.
I will say I feel confident with the support that we're getting.
Okay.
That, that we will be able to provide that clarity and that sense-making and it's a very strategic implementation cycle, it's not like do it all at once. And so I feel confident from the support that we're getting from Nicole and Lori Lee and Carol and then the A plus uh network in North Carolina. That um we will be ready. And um we will do it small, small steps and, you know, do a few things and learn to do them really well and then we'll expand and 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 adapt.
And what you know about your community so far, the parent community, are they receptive to having this uh as an arts integrated school out there?
You answer. I, I have received, I've received good feedback, um still some questions. And and my, my uh response has just been like similar to this, like there's longitudinal data saying that this is really good for s- for kids. It's not gonna be like a little baby fame, um but um we're gonna learn together and they're gonna have their input along the, I would love a baby fame, right? But that's not what this is, right? But um, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like we're building a platform of trust in which we can. Be ready and do what we need to do to be ready as long as it is what's best for our school. You know, we're in the, a formal application process with the A plus network now and that will be submitted in December. And so they may not say yes and and we're okay with that, but we're still gonna take what we learned, it's not violating proprietary things. And if it's good for kids, we're gonna embed it. So I'm, I'm willing to go slow, I'm willing to tell A plus, oh, 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 that's great that that's your agenda, this is my campus needs and, you know. Uh, work, work with them to make it a successful thing, I think having something that's different is is a really good enrollment point. And from everything I've seen from A plus, the, the energy that it brings to the teachers, the energy that it brings to the kids and that's observable to visitors. I think would pay off tenfold and really help us to get our enrollment back up to six fifty is my goal and then maintain.
What is your enrollment then?
Um, with pre-K, it is four hundred and forty-seven, if we take pre-K out of the equation, it is at three hundred and eighty-nine as of today, we got more new students. And so we are um thirty-six above our projected three fifty-three right now and we just, I just submitted a request for some. Some EA support, some teacher assistant support, because our third and fifth grade classes are so large trending at thirty-two. Two sections of thirty-two and one section of thirty-one and one section of thirty. And we're still getting new students, we have two more that will start November eleventh when their grading cycle ends, so transition over.
And your goal is to add one to more students to that school?
Yes, and we have the capacity for it. Um, working with um our facilities right now and saying, we have a lot of classrooms that are double classrooms where the wall has been removed, now it's just a s- space as big as this or bigger than this room. And like how can we put a dividing wall so that we have some acoustic balance and still access to go back and forth? And and that will give us four more classrooms, we have a portable that could hold two classrooms that is not functional right now. So getting on the facility's long-term plan to get those things budgeted for and those projects started. So as we grow, we have more space to do so, I think if we go over six fifty, it's gonna be too crowded, we'll have too many kids in there, I don't think that's.
We'll be about that when we get there, I, I mean, I want to.
Yeah. That's a problem you're willing to.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if you can grow by a hundred students, a hundred and fifty students, that's uh, uh, we'll get there after that. I'm glad that you have the bar set high as like what you talked about.
I'd rather have a bar set a little too high and miss it than have it set too low and hurdle it.
Perfect, perfect. Is there anything else that you need as specific supports? You worked in other school districts, um and now you're in District Eleven, is there anything that as a new principal coming in that you need support? That you've seen in other districts that you would like to see here?
I think right now I want to work with what we have and continue on with the level of support that I'm receiving, I would ask just for constant feedback. Come, walk in our school, see what we're doing.
Send us invites.
Okay.
As you have school events, whether it's uh, you know, art, arts uh events or, you know. We talked about drama, things like those, any of those events.
And and thank you because you attended our fall festival and it was so lovely to have um school member there. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't get to speak with you more.
No, you were busy.
It was a busy day.
Yes, and it was very well attended, I'm trying to figure out where all those people are gonna park as you continue to uh increase your enrollment, because I had to circle.
Again, good problem uh to have, we'll figure that out.
Well, most parents don't park.
Oh.
Right, we have kiss and go lanes and we've improved our drop-off efficiency and we've approved our dismissal efficiency, so it's ten minutes. Now, if you get in line early, that is not on me, but from the time our bell rings until the last car enters from the street, it's ten minutes.
Congratulations.
And I have a stop sign in direct traffic at the bottom every day.
Oh, wow.
And then in the mornings I hit B lot and do that one, so.
Great, any other feedback to principal?
I'll just chime in that um speaking to the community feedback on the VAPA, I know that it was a disappointment, we didn't get the STEM. And that was what was originally designed in that community, but you and I have had side conversations, so I'll just share, uh, you're looking at how we can still incorporate it. We had, well, now it's the dance room, it used to be an amazing STEM lab with robots and.
We just moved it.
And so, and an amazing STEM teacher, but um he's still there and so I know you're working on how to still incorporate those wants that the community has, so just sharing.
Yeah, we um are looking at ways that we can. Continue that as an option for our students in an enrichment capacity, even maybe with some of our wind time for our tier one students, them getting that exposure. To coding and robotics and stuff that we already have the tools for and we already have the training for. And then we've talked with um Jenkins and Doherty and we're like, how can you coach us, how can your kids mentor our kids? And how can we still keep that, because it's important to keep what we would call a feeder pattern where I'm from.
And that was a real strong um point with your fall festival was the fact that you had the Jenkins kids there, you had the high school kids there. And they enjoyed being there, it was very nice, it wasn't like they were the older kids and these are the babies, you know, they really were involved and they were kind. Uh, it was very nicely done.
Well, thanks to my PTA for, for that, because they're amazing and Amanda Court, right? District Eleven just needs to give her some kind of plaque forever because she's doing it at Martinez, she's doing it at Jenkins and she's doing it at Doherty. And she does it with venom vigor and excitement. And so, um, that's not all me, I just do what they tell me to.
And that provides also like what Superintendent Gall talks about, that pathway, parents can see their kids going from Martinez to Jenkins to uh Doherty. Uh, that alignment is there, when you integrate kids from those middle school and high schools into your campus. The kids in your elementary school are going to see, that's going to be my future pathway, I'm going to be a Jenkins Jaguar and I'll be spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're excited to bring to the board this AMP conversation, particularly how the light gets either very focused or diffuses over time. And so we know that an AMP pathway, particularly in arts, will be very attractive to select um uh community members to choose Martinez. We also know that there's a very clear feeder and that goes Martinez to Jenkins and to Doherty. But if you are Mr. or Mrs. Arts when you're at Martinez, then you need to go from uh Martinez to Jenkins and then to Seva. And you need to commit fully to how it is that you are going to use arts as your expression of learning at high school. That's the focus that the AMP pathway needs to provide, as well as the breadth for the family to understand that. Most kids who enter into pathway-specific elementary schools will diffuse over time. Most children will want a comprehensive high school experience with the ability to be in a high-quality dance program that exists at Doherty or to be in the marching band which exists at Doherty. We can go on and on at the things that Doherty or Cor- uh or uh Coronado or Mitchell or Palmer can provide. But with laser specificity of our ability to say, wow, we have some kids that really need quality. Where they're doing, you know, I don't know what they do at Seva, but let's say they go down to UCCS's Performance Arts Center three times a week and are practicing with. College-aged uh or college professors for dance, that's a level of specificity. The pathway needs to either go broad and/or get focused. And we're building those into arts and the STEM, into experiential mental language for the board to understand how it is that we sell the opportunity to families. Because right now we just tell them, we don't sell them, we need to show a child walking from Martinez to Jenkins. And what happens from what I learned at Martinez, and what is that gonna realize at Jenkins, and then there's that decision. Mom, Dad, I think I want to go to school for arts, I want to go to high school for arts, anybody remember the, was it Fame, right? The, our, our younger generation, right, or our older generation? Those conversations need to happen and we can be a conduit to both of those. Which is okay, you want to do it, we're gonna do it, we're gonna send you to a school that is hyper-specific to the area of interest. Or we're gonna give you access to that as a club or an intermural sport or a thing that you like to do or a focus area of study within your graduation profile. And that's what the AMP needs to do, so that's just a teaser through what we'll get to in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, but nothing else, best wishes to you and after what you've shared with us. And I'm confident if you implement this plan as you detail them from others with fidelity, we don't expect to see you here next year. If you can move a, a school like what you talked about during COVID from hundred and forty-eight to eighty-seven in that remote learning environment.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, okay.
Loving everybody's goals to be number eleven.
Yeah, but I, I have no doubts that you would be able to, Martinez, something like that.
Well, my team, the Martinez team will do it together.
Perfect, and you are the leader of that team, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Martinez.
You as well.
Okay, moving on, the last item on the agenda is uh district continuous improvement cycles, um so um. Just to give some context and then I will turn it over to Superintendent Gall. I think his administrative team have been visiting schools on learning walks and uh data review over the past couple of months. So that one plan document that we are talking about is a living, breathing document, uh so there are some of the. He's, he and his team are going to be sharing some of the learnings, takeaways from these learning walks, provide some updates, um. Com- comprehensive data analysis, from what I understand, and I've looked at that thirty-one pages that was posted out there, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
So my apologies to the board for this not uh making the posting date, uh this again is information only. And so I know it is new for us to have kind of an op- an open dialogue, but we want to have an open dialogue for you to see how it is that we're taking the data. And churning it in through the processes that we've talked about. We started at about fifty, sixty thousand feet, we got ourselves down to about twenty thousand feet, we're at ground level right now, the data's in. We had a K twelve meetings today, we had individual breakout sessions going through individual streams of data. And it was a really strong sense of community and collaborative learning in that same space. And we wanted just to share with you how we're looking to do this over the arc of the year. And so with speed, fidelity and intentionality, I give this over to Tamara and to David, thank you both for putting it together.
Great, and it looks like we're just um working to get the slides up.
Uh, so I will say some more words.
Well, I like what you said, speed, fidelity and intentionality.
Yep, just came out of right there, so I'm marking that, it's a new bumper sticker.
That's great.
Um, and really, you know, just revamping and um having the name being that district continuous improvement cycle. That we're working across the district um to review our data, to um check in on what we're learning at one plan meetings. And then also to check in on how are we doing with our um district strategic plan or district one plan. Um, that's, that's been the goal. Um, Marisela, it's okay if um, if the other one, if you need to use the other one, that's fine.
I just pulled it up.
Okay, great, we had noticed a typo on the one that was. Yes, on the one, yes, we did, we noticed a typo, so we fixed it and hopefully have the right one up. All right. Okay, so again, um you can see our district um continuous improvement cycle, cycle will include three areas. One is our look at our most recent district data. Um, for purposes of this conversation, it's um the first assessments for the year that we have um and previous assessments. Um, it'll also look at, we've had one plan continuous improvement meetings or check-in meetings. Um, with every school in the system, so it's what we've learned from those meetings. Um, and then lastly, as you know, we've shared our district one plan, our district um unified improvement plan. Uh, we'll tell you where we're at specifically with our major improvement strategy focus area of best first instruction. Um, where are we at with those action steps? And with that, we, um, because it is the overall continuous improvement cycle for the district. We want to let um everybody know, uh, as Superintendent Gall um was stating, we are doing this across the system. So today, we met with our principals um at what we called our collaborative meeting. Um, it was our K twelve meeting, I was um able to see, I know Director Bankus was there, um. I, there were some others there too, I thought, um, but I know for sure you were there and so you got a chance to see that. Um, so we went through this same exact information uh um as a principal team. And then we also um went through it with our central team, the former executive pro meeting. Um, we're um uh renaming to call Central Huddle, but we'll be doing that every time so that we can go through the data with our central team members, so everybody's on the same page. And then here, today with the board and our community where um we're doing the same thing. Um, I'll also just say um with that, that um. These meetings will be occurring three times throughout the year, so the next one will be in February and then the one after that will be in May. And those will be aligned with our um assessment windows.
Just a quick question to you, as we are going through, you have a lot of slides.
Yes.
If board members have questions, do you want it addressed while we are at that slide or do you want us to hold and come back?
It's too much for us to go back.
Okay.
But try not to go into the, is eleven percent or twelve percent?
Sounds good.
Right, yeah, yes, we're giving you all a peek into the way that we're doing the work.
Okay.
And if we have to have a specific sidebar conversation, then I would rather we hold that, but if you're not understanding the theory or the action that we're trying to put forth, then by all means.
Perfect.
Okay, so we'll start with. Okay, so we'll start with the data. Um, then we'll go into our One Plan trends from having those meetings. And then we'll go into our strategic plan action steps and the progress we've made there to date. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Kalaki to go into the data.
Alrighty, so our, our data story. So as we talked to um principals today, I gave them three real takeaways that I think are applicable here. In that, we don't ever want to just keep one data point in isolation. Where the real power of our multifaceted data approach comes in is when we start layering data on top of each other. So really finding insights across multiple layers of data. Um, and then always looking for what is actionable from this. Never leaving a data point or a data conversation without an action or a plan for action moving forward. And then always asking ourselves compared to what. So putting it in a broader context, because as we, as, as schools look into their data, coming out and looking at compared to the state, compared to the district, compared to other peer schools, right? Other like schools are all valuable conversations. So the One Plan from, from the start, so One Plan one point oh, uh, back in COVID days actually, came out of this framework. So I think it's worthwhile just looking at this in these multiple spheres of looking at data and tracking major improvement strategies. So on the top sphere, we still look at demographics, going around clockwise. We then look at perception data, then student learning data, and then stu- uh, school process data. So any one of those spheres is valuable. If any one of those spheres gives insight, it's when we start layering them and that Venn diagram starts to layer on top of itself that we get real powerful conversations coming out of that. So I'll give, as we go through, I'll give a quick overview of some of the, of the data that we're really prioritizing as a district to look at and then give some examples of what these multi-layered approaches look like. So when we look at demographics, uh, we're using Unified Insights. It's a Power School plugin or Power School piece to look at just enrollment and then disaggregated metrics. So how has our enrollment changed over time? Story of the, story of the fall is that, yeah, we've been a declining district, but we're actually flattening that curve in pretty significant ways. Even our comparison to October count last year is within probably, it's looking like probably within a hundred students. We are wrapping that up. Uh, tomorrow is one of the final deadlines for, for, for counting students that are in our system, but are showing up in different ways and weird ways. And so we're wrapping that up. So I should have by the end of this week or beginning of next week, an update for you all on our, on our very final numbers. But we are looking really good.
Enrollment numbers for this year.
What's that?
Is the, is that what you said? The enrollment numbers for this year?
Uh, correct, the enrollment numbers for this year.
And when you have that, could you forward that?
Yep. Yeah, the minute I get it and we, we're cleaned up. So it would definitely be projections and within a, within the margin of error for to, for comparison to October right now. Then looking at enrollment change over time, disaggregated groups based on the school performance framework and the district performance framework. So this is ethnicity, this is ELL, this is uh economic disadvantage. Basically, one of the takeaways, so we always want to take this data and then pull out some tangible um observations from it and then start to layer it on top of other data. So the ten, one tangible takeaway is that our Hispanic student population continues to increase as a percentage of the population. So that gives some really good follow-up conversation. How, when we start looking at multiple layers of data and approaches, and how does that change our communication strategies? How does that change our outreach? How do, when we're looking at, when we're looking at two-way communication, how does that, how does that impacted? So some important follow-up questions.
Can you just go back up there, Dr. K? Some of the data that I have on my screen does not match up with what you have up there. So is that the most recent numbers that you have? Because the one that, that's on Board Docs
Oh, yeah.
has completely different numbers.
Uh, we'll look at that.
Okay.
What do you mean by completely different?
Like all those numbers, the student numbers that.
On the far right, on the far right on my screen, it's uh ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five. On the far right on this one, it's nine thousand nine hundred seventy-one.
So are we off a page? Cause that's a thousand kids. And what's the number? All the numbers are version-controlled. Cause was there just a conversation with Maricela on which deck she was opening?
Yeah, but that was just a, that, yeah, that wasn't, yeah, it was just a.
So we are off by twelve, thirteen hundred kids all over the place, so. So.
Okay. Um, can I get back to you?
Sure.
No, uh, so, no, we, we need to figure this out. So what, where does this data pull from? We've been staring at this brief, you know, six times in the last six days. So is it pulling from an active page?
No, no, this is a static page from who knew it.
And so, Maricela, what, what is the version that you have on Board Docs that was sent?
That's the original one that uh was provided to me by uh Tamara.
Just open up the night that you sent it, you sent it when.
Yeah, it's from the same Google doc. It was just put into a PDF. So it's from the same, it's from the same version.
I, I, I don't know what.
So di- is this the first enrollment slide? There's one prior to this one, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have that one either. We have a single line for that one.
So that one came out. So these were the, these were the revisions for the.
So if there's um revisions made that were updated, that didn't um.
Make it to Board Docs.
That wasn't.
Make it to Board Docs.
Right.
It must have been updated after it was.
Right, so let's take the second and resend it to Maricela and she'll post it on Board Docs. So the board is looking at the most current version.
The version that we used this at this morning.
So who?
Yeah, which will be the exact same one that you uploaded here.
Right. So it's just the most current version, what you have talking. You can look at it and get back to us when.
Uh, no, I, I'm sorry. I just, if I'm gonna have an information conversation and I'm off seventeen hundred kids, that's not acceptable, so. Which is the right number? And then we're all gonna look at the same thing. So if that means we turn off the screens, we turn off the screens and then we all share a screen on what's Board Docs. Which one is correct?
It's the one that's up there.
The one that's up there.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do we get that into everybody's laptop? Because.
She's got the version. She can upload it.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bring a blanket. Plug it in.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and keep going, then we can come back to the enrollment. Um, so overlaying the data, then we can see, this is just by way of example of one way of doing this. Looking at demographics and then market share. This is a metric that we can use out of Power School. We're actually developing our own uh as well with our more localized data to answer, be able to answer some more questions. But demographics and market share, so overall, if we look at this in area superintendent region, uh, we see that we're only capturing at best fifty-five percent of our market share in the southeast, the highest, uh, down to forty-four percent on the west side. So sometimes we hear is D eleven declining enrollment district because of an aging population or fewer fam- letting families moving in. It does not appear that way. So it appears that we have plenty of young families. We're not capturing those at the.
I'm glad that we are caught you now, because we've heard contrary to that information in the past. It is because of aging, declining population, or parents not having enough kids, um, those kind of things. Like from, that data seems to indicate something completely different, that we do have kids and we are not capturing them.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you refresh your page in Board Docs, it's uploaded in Board Docs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcel.
So this is just one example of overlaying two different data sources to get, to get to a deeper conversation. So then when we look at student learning, uh, do we want to go back to enrollment?
I, I've given error. Is anybody else or? Maybe I have to relearn that myself. Yeah, you have to refresh the page.
It's working for me, I think.
Yeah, mine, mine's fresh now.
It's probably just Board Docs. I'm trying again. Thank you.
Yeah, it is working.
Then, uh, go on.
Did you skip a slide?
Skip.
Slide seven. Did we talk about it?
Do we need to?
One more, back one more.
Yeah, change over time. So that was the one I was talking about, we're about a hundred off of last year's October count?
Oh, okay. Okay, start.
I do apologize for that. And then we're just looking at, we're looking at enrollment changes over subgroups as well. And then overlaying multiple data sources.
When we look at student learning, so if we look at the Venn diagram and working our way around, you can see. I just want to go back. We just, we reset all those numbers. Now everybody has the right numbers. Let's rebrief the slides with the lines. So let's go to where we were on the enrollment. So the board has the chance to see and ask if they have any questions, particularly in the change of the slope of the lines. Right? The goal was to increase or to stop decreasing enrollment. So we believe that we are close to flatline in just the first four months. The board gets a ton of credit for that, because the board has come on board since last year with great clarity and vision of no more nonsense. This is the school district that says, we believe that we can win and we are going to get it done. We will not please all the people in those statements and our strategies will need to be modified over time. But just the message alone and students and families wanting to come back to school districts post-COVID has got us to almost a flatline. So I think it's very important that everybody look at that to see how much we beat the projection by. The projection was, we will not just continue to lose, we will lose at even a greater rate than we have lost in the past. So as, we have very many crisscrossing strategies this year that are impacting not just how we talk about enrollment, how we talk about budget, how we talk about portfolio, how we talk about how we talk to our community. This is a critical slide for us to talk about. There's another subset that comes into this slide, which is the power of centralized enrollment. If we could blow this slide up and talk about David's team and their work of this smaller difference between last butts-in-seats count, hot count to system count, it was much tighter than it's ever been before, which means our margin of error is getting smaller because we have a collective data source. That doesn't mean that centralized enrollment is perfect. We need to make sure that we support the individualized needs of our schools and our families. Because particularly at high schools, we got a lot of feedback that says, hey, we had this just fine. But you know what? We have it better now because we can be predictive and stop all this chain yanking around of moving FTEs because we didn't have enough and we don't have enough. We're only about a hundred kids off of last year and we beat our projection, which means that we added teachers where we needed to and we're probably not gonna have to make more than a couple of teacher corrections at mid-year budget true-up. That's another win for the board. That says that we are functioning with, what did I say? Speed, fidelity, and intentionality. And if we can get to a place where we can be predictive in a system of choice, then we can be hyper-predictive on where we want to put our adverts on making sure that we increase enrollment. To a trailblazer conversation last night at Town Hall. So this is an important slide. So I just wanted everybody to sit and seeing where we are over projection and just a little bit off of last year's October count. And that's shown the green bean projection and over the, uh, the green bean where we are over the projection of red and then the yellow bean last year's count, which is why it ends a year earlier in that line.
I appreciate you pointing that out specifically. And the message that we've been sending out over and over again since January has been that we accept every parent and every student, wherever they are, coming into our district. And we are here to lift every student up, provide the specific needs and supports that student needs to exceed and excel and exceed their potential. So I'm glad that that message is resonating with our community and they are coming back to our school district to some extent. And that's why we are.
Right, and we're just not leaving at the rate that we thought they would. And both of those are good news stories. In a system that's been told that we have an aged population, again, I live right down the street. Everybody knows it. You can't swing a dead cat without hitting a crane. There are more cranes and more apartments going up downtown than we know what to do with. Boy meets boy, girl meets girl, boy meets girl. I don't care how you do it. There's gonna be a ton of babies coming out of downtown in five years. Are we ready for that? We're not. We're maxed out at Stratton, we're maxed out at Columbia, we're maxed out at Steel, we're maxed out at Taylor. You know who had the best idea I've heard all year? Shawna Kurtz. She says, why don't we turn one-one-one-five North El Paso into North Elementary School, right across from North Middle School, and take central office and put it over a Tesla? Boom. Now we have an answer for a growing elementary population. Doesn't mean that's what we have to do.
I'll have to drive a long distance to get to board meetings. I'll have to drive a long distance to get to board meetings.
We'll, we'll move it to some other place.
No, I'm just kidding.
The point being is we have to start thinking about what are we gonna do with that growing population?
Yeah.
Real quick, can you define third system count and fourth system count? What does that mean?
Yeah, so that is a count that comes straight out of Power School. So the BTS count is a back-to-school count. That's a live count out at schools that gets submitted to centralized enrollment. And then we look at, we compare that number to what we pull out of Power School. And what that does is gives us an indication of who, uh, what students and families we need to follow up on. They're showing up in our system, but they're not showing up necessarily at schools. And then we bring those two together.
So is third referring to one system and four is referring to a different system or is it two different kinds?
It's in sequence, two different counts.
Two snapshots.
Correct.
Right, so we go from hot seats where we were literally yellow stickies in principal's office, class by class by class. And then we went to system counts. And what was great is that we were tighter this year than we thought we would be from the system count to the last hot count. Because we knew, well, you all knew and you lived it, the challenges of Power School last year meant that there were all kinds of gross inefficiencies. And then we've gotten so advanced now, and, and John's not here, he's not feeling well. But his team was able to run the algorithm that was telling us where we had duplications instead of us having to go find the duplications. Cause there really aren't a lot of Lauren Nelsons. And if I can just say Lauren Nelson, put in your birth year and say, wait a second, why are you at Jenkins and at Dory at the same time? Oh, I had some rollover issue. I should only count you once. So we got much tighter on that, which is why I said it when we had the, even before count. When we started the school year, we're gonna beat our projection and we're gonna be darn tootin' close to last year's October count. And here we are for that.
Awesome.
So that the yellow line, when you project it, it'll most likely meet with that red dot? That's.
Uh, the, the October count?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it'll, it's right now, it's about a hundred. It's about a de- delta of a hundred. We expect that to pretty hold, hold pretty much true. Okay? And then just looking at enrollment changes over time by ethnicity, Hispanic student population again continuing to increase.
Can you go back to that one more time? At what rate? So the scale here is a little bit off. And so everything kind of looks flat. But I want you to look at the numbers. Can you read the numbers for the group? Just go four years ago number Spanish population to current year. Uh, well, we have community watching, so I just want to make sure that we get voice to action to the takeaway here. And if anybody can turn around, anybody still, I can't see.
I can see. Seven thousand two eighty-five to six thousand nine sixty-six.
So, okay, so the growth, growth is over last year, but it's still down over time, okay? But it's the fastest growing population that we have over the last year's count. And we saw that specifically in Sherry's Neck of the Woods. And I remember when we ran the data, if we pulled out Mitchell High School, we were somewhere between eight and ten percent of growth in the southeast for elementary schools and middle schools. And so when we talk about aged population, yes, people that live behind the Citadel Mall don't have kids anymore and they're not going to our schools. But yes, there is demand coming back, both from a resurgent downtown and from immigrant populations coming in to places where there is affordable housing, which happens to be predominantly in the southeast. We have to, and so we heard last night at the Town Hall again, where are our translators? Where are our bilingual uh systems leaders? Where are the people who can make outreach to our community that we can understand the shifting demographics of what we have to face going forward?
Questions or comments on that one?
Just really interesting map. I like it. Thank you for putting that together.
Um, just, just an aside, we are working with Deborah, so just an update on that, on some of the outreach that marketing is doing. Uh, we now have a, a set of data on that first round that probably are gonna be identifying about five hundred families that engaged with that book club. And a fair number of those are either outside of the district or have not engaged with D eleven in our system yet. So we're working on getting a, a geocoded map, so a map with actual family addresses on there who have not engaged with D eleven and aren't in our system. So they're actually new, new systems to the market share. So I'll be reporting on that at a later point as we get that cleaned up. But that's pretty exciting to see that, to see the fruit of that. But that's pretty exciting to see that, to see the fruit of that effort. So then if we go to the next Venn diagram on this, on student learning. So you've heard about STAR assessments. That's our new assessment system that you, um, you all budgeted for. So thank you so much for that. A really good rollout, smooth rollout and training. Um, using that as our district benchmark metric to, to create a through line or waypoints for us as we move into CMAS season. Um, and then using those, those progress monitoring tools that are in STAR and our Performance Matters CIA's Common Interim Assessments as even, as markers and points even closer to the work in the classroom. And then looking at PSAT, SAT, uh, CMAS, Call or Measures of Academic Success and Acadients and other, other pieces. So when we look at percent of students reading at grade level, we did review these data earlier in the year.
Do you want to go back for just a minute? On the SAT, are colleges still shedding that as a criterion? Or are they, have they stopped doing that? I, I don't know.
Generally, it's still, it's still a criterion. There are some that are making it optional. That's generally more at the, at kind of the liberal art, private liberal arts, uh, um, market share.
So it's still a marker.
Yeah, 1A, division, division one type of schools like UCCS and those are still using it.
Thank you.
So if we look at percentage of students reading at grade level, so this is the cadence that you've heard, um, uh, over and over in our, um, UIP, school UIP conversations. This is at the district level. So you've been hearing school level data. So at the district level, about just, um, above half of our K through two students started the year reading at grade level and that is about approaching pre-pandemic levels. So that's, that's good news, but we definitely want to keep pushing on that and move that up at beginning of year to make it more than half of our students.
From what I've seen, that if you go back there from the 2019, 20, when we didn't have the third quarter data because we closed schools and then you could jump up to 2020, 2021, the steep drop that you see because our students were without instruction for five or six months out there. Just about all. That was the start of the pandemic. So it was a, usually there is that summer melt that you talk about, summer learning, that was even more significant than everything else.
When we look at particularly the students that are in need of the highest, highest level of treatment or intervention because they're coming in well below benchmark on the beginning of year acadience data. We can see that about one out of our three, one out of three of our tested students start the year well below appropriate reading level. So that is important for targeted intervention and targeted treatment that we want to really start to grow and shrink that group, shrink the size of that group to middle of year and, and end of year. But this is one example of a real, of, of how schools will be using these targeted data to create these, uh, to create these interventions.
And one of the positive things I, I'm looking forward to seeing is that with our expanded preschool opportunities that rather than having kids come from, straight from home for their first five years into kindergarten, they will have some preschool experience which will set them up to the expectations that we have and the growth that we would like to see. And the diagnostics that go on in preschool so that we can program for their needs before they hit our, our kindergarten front door.
Being proactive.
Yeah, we have a very nice kind of natural experiment here with the expansion of that to look at those differences pre, pre to post. When we look at academic trends, these are the types of observations that schools are using. So again, this is at the district level, but this is very typical of what school conversations look like. So nonsense word fluency and oral reading fluency accuracy. So we're disaggregating the, um, acadience data down into the grade level and the actual skill level. So this kind of highlights some of the things, uh, that were brought out with acadience data is it's very skill focused at the early reading level. And so these are some of the, these are some of the takeaways from that. So.
Could we use this data, since you have very, you know, like you mentioned, very pinpointed, to then say, here's where we're going to use that S R money for tutoring, you know, at this level, knowing these are the pinpoint places where we need to work on stuff? I mean, can we, can we do that in saying, hey, we need tutoring in these areas for these specific grades?
Yeah, definitely the point here is to be able to use and look at what are the overall district trends that we're seeing in early literacy so we can pinpoint, um, additional resources and/or, um, really what we thought of is how do we look at it for how the professional learning we're providing for, um, for our leaders and our teachers in areas that they need to focus? So you can see that we've done that here in early literacy. And then later David will go into, we've done it in mathematics as well because those are key focus areas that we've identified in our strategic plan, early literacy and mathematics.
Uh, to the, to the point is what, what is actionable though? That's a real takeaway of this, that by drilling down, we get to actionable, actionable steps. And then looking at foundational skills out of, out of acadience. So looking specifically at first grader performance, whole word read is the concept or the, or the construct. And then beginning to second year grades. So looking at this on a longitudinal basis. And so the implication, we see significant variation in proficiency or, uh, or well below benchmark, moving from whole group to more small group. Targeted reading support, so that'll be a critical action out of, out of this to make that transition from one grade to the next over time, smooth and efficient.
So maybe I'm already thinking like too far ahead of this and you can tell me, but will that then mean more staff or more volunteer opportunities? Bring our community in to volunteer and, and be able to facilitate those small groups versus having the one teacher in a classroom? I don't know. Maybe I'm like already too far ahead on thinking, how do we make this happen?
Tamara?
Yeah, it could be. It, it could definitely be those pieces. But first it starts with how we're programming within, um, with the resources we have within building. And so that's absolutely, this is absolutely doable with what we have currently um, in early literacy core instruction. I think one of the things to, um, to point out here, it was on the previous slide. Um, but the, the trend that we're seeing in the trend statement where it says we see recovery to close to pre-pandemic levels in phonemic awareness in K1. We have to be really cautious of that because pre-pandemic levels were not where we wanted them to be. So I, while that could be considered positive news, it's actually not, it's not positive. Like we, we need it to be higher than that, although we are happy, right, that we are returning because we know that there was a gap.
But that piece of information for some of our community members and parents lets them know that we have put into place those things that, um, we have recognized the fall off and we're remedying that.
Absolutely.
So I agree with you that it's not where we want to be, but, but I know that we had an awful lot of questions about, what are you guys doing to make sure that we make up for? And to know, to send that message out that's saying, okay, we're, we're past, we're that downfall. We're, we're on that trend. I think it sends a strong message.
Absolutely. And there was a lot of intentional work that went in, um, to being able to get there, right? All of our teachers went through trainings and letters specifically with that science of reading and foundational skills. Um, and we've also transitioned to a new curriculum, um, that is aligned to the science of reading. We've had a lot of training in acadience and DIBL's work. So there's been a lot of intentional work, work that will continue on and we'll be able to use this data, um, even better. Um, the implication on the next slide, I, David, I'll highlight really quickly. This is interesting that we're seeing, um, and our literacy specialists within the department also called it out, that we're seeing, um, variance, um, students on the, um, in the proficiency category or in the well below benchmark. And there's not a lot of in-between as an overall district. Um, so we really, it, it tells us we have to target that well below, um, uh, and move them pretty quickly. And the good news is with early literacy and at the early grades, you can make quick movement, um, on, on skills, um, and, and get students there, um, within the year. It's, uh, you can close that gap early. We do it before third grade. From the previous conversation, um, with how, uh, when we're also doing standards implementation and having exposure to, um, critical thinking skills, um, and, uh, comprehension, um, then we, then we can meet that mark in third grade and, and close the gap all around.
Great. Thank you. So from acadience and early reading, uh, the next layer of data that we use, uh, CMAS and, uh, particularly growth compared to peers. So overall, you can see the takeaway in ELA CMAS growth, we are not growing at pre-pandemic rates. And again, I think this holds, this point holds true to Tamara's point in general. We want to most definitely exceed pre-pandemic rates. But I think to Dr. Banks's point as well, it is a talking point because the learning gap, the learning loss, what's, what, what's being done to overcome that is, is important to look at. So ELA, we started, we came back from the pandemic at a higher, at a higher rate, right, at a higher level. In math, we are exceeding pre-pandemic rates because we came out of the pandemic, as did pretty much the nation, pretty low in math. So that ceiling was, was pretty broad. We had, we had a lot of room to grow. Um, just to, by way of reminder as well, CMAS growth for this year is a sample set of data. It's not an entire data set because, fourth, let's talk about math. Um, math was tested for even grades last year only. And so that means in an elementary, growth was, growth was calculated for the fifth graders because they were the only ones to take the fourth grade, uh, test last year. So in some of our schools, that might be 40 students, that might be one teacher. It's a, it's a limited sample. Is it worthwhile? Is it valuable? Absolutely. Does it triangulate against other way, other things that we're seeing within math learning in ELA? Absolutely. But just keeping in mind that it's, in many cases, representing one teacher or one classroom or maybe two classrooms. So, uh, important, um, but limited. So this next year, we should be back on track, full, full sample, uh, for growth being calculated. When we look at that same metric for PSAT, um, we notice that just it's a more, it's a, it's a slower metric to respond and bounce back with. We see that in both ELA, EBRW rather. EBRW stands for evidence-based reading and writing. Uh, it's the equivalent that the college board uses for ELA. And math growth, we're not growing at pre-pandemic rates and we are still, um, we're still behind the state in, in several ways. So in PSAT, yeah, we're, we are not growing at the rate of the, uh, average student across the state.
Can I ask really quick, what would be the target for median growth percentile? Like we're comparing to peers, but the state as a whole isn't really doing that well. I mean, even the schools that are in the top 12, like a neighbor, they're at, you know, 50% of kids are proficient. So what?
The bar's not that high.
Yeah. So when we say we're comparing to peers, what would be ideal?
Um, if we could, if we could hit median growth percentiles in the high 50s to 60s, that would be, that would indicate that we're exceeding our peers, especially through the north. And, uh, it would be, it would also indicate more importantly that we're closing the achievement gap. Because what we've, what we see in our data across the district is that we generally see decent growth. Um, PSAT, SAT is slower. We see decent growth, but we still are low in overall achievement.
Yeah.
Percent of students, uh, working at grade level. So if we look at a 60, median growth percentile of 60, 62, 65, we're, we're significantly closing that gap.
And it's getting you, correct me if I'm wrong, it's getting more than a year's worth of growth in a year's work.
That is absolutely correct. That's another way to see it.
Saying against 60 to 65% is kind of what we would want to see?
Yeah, in median growth percentile.
Yeah.
Potentially. It gets you in the high growth range. And when you get into like the 65 range, 60 and above, that's when you start to see more movement of students into the proficient category. And that's really what we should be striving for.
And our SPF, our school performance frameworks didn't reflect that with, with very, very strong growth. Then we look at SAT. So, uh, the last, the last point in CMAS in a student's, uh, student's career. And you can see that again, we're slow, uh, in responding to pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels. But even then, we were still below half of our students, uh, median expected growth. So we're in the 40, 47 percentile, uh, back in 2016, 17. And kind of at that, at that same level throughout. So again, mathematics grew faster, uh, and that's a reflection of just the really low level, the really low level of performance that we came out of the pandemic with. So we are growing and you can see the takeaway, not growing at pre-pandemic rates in, in EBRW, but in math, we are exceeding. So it's similar. Then looking at how many students are college-ready? This is a, the state uses the definition based on college board assessments. So when we look at that, uh, fewer than half of our district students tested at a college-ready level in EBRW and fewer than a quarter in math. So this is a metric that we need to really, uh, hone in on. This is a reflection of C, of PS, of SAT performance as well as some other metrics. I think that we're doing really interesting work though, and this is an example of layering on a couple more datas, data levels. I think we're doing very interesting work in the, um, the number of students that are engaging in other ways of matriculation, right? Or in other opportunities for post-secondary readiness, meaning, um, CTE, Career Tech Education Participation. Um, uh, just the various, the various options for, uh, becoming college-ready, for whatever that means two-year or four-year. So the college, I will say the college board metric is biased towards a four-year. And we want to be able to, to talk about it in a more sophisticated way to talk about both two-year and four-year options. So again, this data is helpful, but we want to layer on another data that Dr. Mendelsburg is really leading, uh, with, with high school principals and looking and, and Dwayne, Dwayne's work with CTE. Now closer to the actual work of the classroom was our first round of beginning of year STAR assessment, uh, district benchmark. And so what we can take out of this, we have trained, um, almost all principals have been trained and the ones that have not are getting follow-up, uh, follow-up training. And hundreds of teachers have been, have been trained in utilizing, um, all school, school assessment coordinators have been trained. And now that's translating out to teachers and buildings to be using STAR assessment data in very sophisticated ways to highlight and focus in on particular skills and set and standards, basically. So within elementary grade four, you can see across the district, uh, we show greatest need in statistics and probability. Middle school, we see number and quantity. And then all traditional high schools, um, you can see algebra and functions building. Um, and, and function, and using, using functions. So these are at the school level then. There is a nice report that we want to use with, with real clarity and I'll explain that in just a moment. And Tamara, you might jump in here. We want, we are using a, a report called a Focus Skills Report that takes a student's results and then really highlights for a teacher, for, for a team or PLC, what focus, what skills are underlying those and where, what grade level are those skills at, at the moment of testing? So for example, when we looked at third grade data, right, and we looked at numeracy or quantitative reasoning, we can see that students are functioning, a lot of students were functioning at the second grade level. Now at the beginning of year, we expect that to be true in, in, to some degree, right? But we want to know, okay, where are the areas that we can really hone in on then and make changes and make particular, particular focus, you know, focus groups and focus work to be able to bring those up while not neglecting grade level standards at the same time? So really it's, it's a spiraling conversation. How can we build in those core skills into current grade level, uh, grade level standards? And we are able to pull out two reports that show us, that show us that type of data. So anything you'd want to add to that?
No, I just would say also too, because we have the district level trend. Um, with our professional learning, in focusing for planning for learning, uh, we can pull out these grade levels and show how you would do it, David was just describing. How do you give access to grade level content and work on the skill, the prerequisite skill that students aren't, don't have mastery with yet? Um, so how do you do that? That's, that's pretty complex. Um, but if, if student, if, um, students are only given remedial skills-based instruction, they will never hit the target of grade level and above expectations.
And that really highlights the problem. If, if, and sometimes folks get stuck with, well, if they can't add, subtract, multiply and divide, how can they get onto the rest? And being able to recognize that and giving them that foundation, but also moving them forward.
It's a hundred percent, a hundred percent accurate.
Yeah, it's like quandary.
Yeah.
Spiraling those skills together to move, to move forward.
What do these graphs show? Like, the zero to twenty, what is that showing us?
So that is, hold that up here. Those are, that is the number of items within that, within those domains. So what we are looking at here is.
Just want to highlight here too for this slide, I, I don't want to misspeak. It's a district-level trend for our priority schools. So the STAR, the STAR assessment, we can't actually pull these trends for the overall district out of, there's not a report. But what the Ed Insight, what David's team did is took a look at our seventeen priority schools, went into each school individual report, and then lifted up the trends that we're seeing. So kudos to them.
Yeah.
So are you saying for grade four data statistics probability, the second bar from the left, there were over twenty-five questions on that particular skill on the assessment? Is that what that means?
Within that domain, yeah.
Oh. So do we want, I'm still at that point. Do we want these graphs, the green bars, to be high or low?
At the beginning of the year, we expect them to be, to be relative, relatively low, but we want them to grow.
So right now, you have Audubon and Carver right next to each other in that graph. Which one is doing better? Is Audubon doing better or Carver doing? Audubon is way up there, Carver is way below.
Aud-
Y-axis mean?
Audubon is doing better.
Your eyes are better than mine.
I'm zoomed in.
I'm looking at you.
I'm zoomed in at like two hundred percent.
Oh, so those aren't the number of items, those are the schools.
Yeah, so the schools are the bar.
Each one, each bar is a school.
Gotcha.
Yes, and. I'll zoom in.
Yeah.
That's how they were able to pull the data together.
Yeah, so this is, this is in.
They used the label and the y-axis next to the bars.
Yeah, we definitely need to do that.
Yeah, I think they, I think the team, I think David's team put these in to be representative for how they did it, but like really the trend statements were what we were looking at there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then if we just look at math overall, academic trends across CMAS, PSAT, and SAT, honing in on those actionable items. So at the district level, we're looking at third-grade modeling and supporting content, fourth-grade reasoning and modeling, fifth-grade reasoning and modeling. So modeling, you can think about as applying mathematical concepts to a real-world situation.
Higher rigor.
Yeah. Modeling is always the higher, yeah, the higher, you know, PSE, that's the higher skill.
So I want to go back to that last slide. And when we look at Carver, that has a high Spanish-speaking enrollment, and the tests are given in English. How are we addressing that?
There are Spanish, Spanish versions of these assessments.
There are. Thank you.
Great question, thank you.
Are there other languages?
We do not have other languages, but we can contract to support those. We did, not for STAR, but for Galileo, I believe, we did, we had a Farsi speaker that helped. In middle, then, we have reasoning and modeling, seventh-grade reasoning, eighth-grade reasoning and modeling. So in the middle school, these are really foundational algebra readiness skills. And they are the deeper, the deeper skills applying the, the functional arithmetic skills kind of into a more ill-defined space that really does predict algebra readiness and algebra reasoning. And then PSAT eight, nine, and ten, these are terms used by the College Board. So hard algebra is, are those basic core pre-algebra func, functions or skill sets. Understanding what a function is, understanding what a variable is, line, slope, things of that nature. So these are areas that as a district, we'll be watching and we'll be looking and monitoring to see where are we growing across the work distributed across the schools. So we have, it's, it's pretty exciting. We have, with the new system, multiple ways of looking at data down to the student level, creating functional plans of action that then will translate to hopefully change that we see across the district over time in these areas. When we look at STAR reading, this is, this is beginning of year, reading percent passing by grade. Looking at the STAR literature, we want, it's pretty typical to have in the thirty-six to forty percent at beginning of year because there are, there is a large number of grade-level standards. And they are just at the beginning of those grade-level standards. So this is truly baseline data. What we do, another report that we get and are using pretty extensively is projected mastery. So again, this is not the end-all, be-all report and number, but it is a very nice piece of data in that the, the STAR Renaissance system can take and match students in our pool of students to students in their national pool that answered similar questions with similar, in similar ways. Pool those and create a projected mastery. In the past, thus, this type of student has achieved a sixty-five percent mastery or an eighty percent mastery or a seventy percent mastery. So using that as a way to set some reasonable goals from beginning of year to middle of year to end of year. So that's an exciting, a new component that we have not had in the past. So in STAR reading, we're low, but we're kind of on, we're kind of on track with the national sample for beginning of year. In STAR math, we're, we're low compared to the national sample.
Wait, sorry, can I pause you for a second? Can you say again, what is normally expected at beginning of year rates?
High thirties to mid-forties.
Because it's the standards that they will learn throughout the year and they just haven't learned it yet.
Correct.
So we would never expect a hundred percent.
Right.
Either, just to, thank you.
And remember, it's adaptive. So a student is never, is never sitting there answering questions that they don't know. That was, that was the case in the previous. We want to avoid that. They get a question based on their answer, they, they might get an easier question and an easier question until they find that spot. So it's, it's a, I would say it's quicker and it's a more pleasant experience to take a test where you're not just, I know one answer here. And it's not, it's not fun. It's not a good experience. So with STAR math, we are low. And one takeaway here for us is that this beginning-of-year metric can be a measure of, of summer melt, to your Director Mel Packham, to your point. Where if we're getting in the forties, we can be pretty sure that learning is sticky, right? That that summer melt process is being limited in, to the degree that we can because that learning was sticky. When we start with low beginning-of-year measures like this, it's an indication that we have a lot of learning loss over, over a summer, from beginning of year, from beginning of year.
But that would be the case nationwide, right? So when you're looking at nationwide data.
Definitely. This, this is.
They're going to learn, lose less over, lose more over the summers and.
Correct.
So go ahead.
Correct. Yeah. The way that STAR talks about it is it talks about beginning, developing, and secure. And by secure, they mean that they have, they have been able to play with that information and use it and manipulate it in ways that makes that learning stick for longer. And so the expectation is that if you're insecure, then you can use that data, you can use that information at a later point with success. So it's a pretty sophisticated model. It's a pretty sophisticated way of looking at it. And it really is helping us set meaningful but aspirational goals for moving students from beginning of year to end of year.
Just a thought here, and I just want some feedback on it. We had the summer bridge or summer enrichment, summer bridge, right, that's what it's called. So is it possible to pull that data for the students that took the summer bridge and students that did not take the summer bridge with the beginning of the year data and make a comparison of the summer bridge? Helped, you know, with the melt or whatever it is? Can we get some kind of correlation on that?
Yeah, I actually have a PhD student who's doing research on, she, she did research on last year's retention of knowledge, and she's doing that for the same this year. So that's in process.
Great. If, if and when you get that information, that will provide some feedback if our summer bridge is working effectively too. So would like to see that there.
Excellent. I can do that. So overlaying, so an example of overlaying multiple data points. So we have student learning. So on this one, we have, you can see, you know, let's see, math percentile on the Y-axis versus, and attendance on the X-axis. So overlaying two data sources. So what is the relationship between attendance and math performance? Now, right, not the rock, not a rocket science type of question, right? You go to school, there should be a positive gain, there should be positive impact. What, what gets interesting then is when we look at it compared to FRL. So the color of each dot is represented by the percent FRL of the school and then the size of the school. And so what we see is that average school attendance, this is a statistically significant relationship. So average attendance rate explains nearly half of the change in math performance, controlling for FRL. So we generally think economic disadvantage is probably the biggest effect or biggest, has the biggest, largest impact on math performance or academic performance. And within our data, it's about, attendance is about half. And attendance is something that's well within our control. It's kind of low-hanging fruit if we think about it.
Yeah.
And, and it's a reflection, it, it can be a reflection of what kind of learning culture, what kind of learning climate we're setting up in our schools and different pieces. Another very interesting data layer is just looking at the chronic attendance patterns across our district. So the question might be, you know, do they clump? Chronic attendance decisions and, and patterns clump in different areas in the district, and they actually do. If you look at Swigert's pattern, it is very, it is very closely linked to apartment complexes. So that's an interesting question about what's the peer effect between that? If one kid says like, I'm not going to school, oh, you're not going to school? Well, I'm, maybe I'm not going to school. You know, is that, is that what's happening? And so now, opportunities to communicate with families and parents in culturally relevant ways to talk about the importance of, of school and just some of that, some of that motivational science that's coming out of marketing. Another one, another school, if we ask, well, maybe it's a transportation issue, the most, the most absences are actually coming from a few blocks away from the school. So they're actually centered around the school, and that's where the most chronic absences are. And so it's not, doesn't, in that case, doesn't appear to be a transportation issue, but more of an engagement. And again, family, family, an opportunity for that two-way dialogue with families. When we look at it again, students in school with about a ninety-two percent or, or more average attendance rate, so this is across the entire school, generally with our data, are about two times more likely to meet expected growth. And we know that this is, this is overlaid by lots of data, right? There's lots of reasons why a good attendance rate is going to pay off dividends across a school. But this is just one example of the power of overlaying multiple data points that we're really committed to in what, in when we look at data.
So are those bigger dots, like the high schools, that kids might just be skipping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's the school size. And, and when you hover over it in the live, in the live version, you, you get the actual school.
So this is all fifty-plus schools, that applies.
All schools.
Yeah.
So then when we look at perceptions, this is probably one of the biggest, the strongest tools to be able to overlay data with numerical data, performance data with climate and culture. Is it a perfect measure? Absolutely not. Is it a way to start deeper conversations about climate and culture within a building? Absolutely. That's, that's its strength. So again, we don't want to be hype, we don't want to be completely honed in on one piece and derive all our answers and all our questions from one piece. We want to get it from a diverse data image. But we are, as a district, moderately organized, meaning we have some pieces in place that, that are ready to launch us forward, and then we have other pieces that are still, still drags on the system. So within our five essential trends over, we talked about this last spring, so it's been a while. Within, within our district, math instruction is actually where we grew the most. So this is a student-answer item of, how, how is, as a student, am I experiencing math instruction? Do I get the opportunity to engage with interesting problems? Do I get the opportunity to look, talk about math in a way that's outside of the classroom? In different ways out, in the real world, right? So kind of relevance. So that's, that's a positive thing, and we need to keep growing that. Collaborative practices, that's a teacher-answer item. How, to what degree are collabor, collaboration happening across teams? English instruction, academic press overall, and then parent involvement in school. So these are good things. We want to grow these, grow these more and more. Our highest ones were student-teacher trust. English instruction, parent influence on decision-making. Which is, which was not the case. We actually, we actually grew from one year, from the previous year to, to now. I think we'll probably actually see that continue to, to increase given several major improvement strategies being family interaction and family engagement. By the way, the parent-family survey is still open. We're looking at the participation rates, and that will be open until the twenty-third of November. And then program.
Reasonable participation so far.
It's, it's, it's high in some places, lower in other places. But everybody, I think, the area soup's are really, you know, pushing, and I think it's going to really come together here.
This is only the parent part of the survey.
Only the parent, correct. So now decreases, peer support for academic work. This is a student-answer item. How seriously do I feel that my peers take academic work? And what's the expectation for them? When we look at our lowest-performing area, it's collective responsibility. So that is a teacher-answer item in which teachers are talking about, what's the degree to which I feel like people around me are taking ownership for student outcomes? So this is, this one is, this one is pretty important, I think. Because that, schools that really have a high collective responsibility, and a high, a high collective buy-in is another way you can think about it. They see results because that leads into deeper conversations among teachers, generally higher teacher-leader trust, so you get these other secondary benefits from it. So then if we look at insights from perceptions, this is actually an example of a way that we can layer on three different data, data sources. So attendance, academics, and five E. So we know attendance is important. Explains a pretty large point, part of, of math performance and ELA performance. So what really supports attendance? Some, from our five E data, supportive environments and involved parents are equally correlated to attendance, and they are the top ones. That makes sense. An involved parent is going to understand the reason to get your kid to school. There's going to be a value in it. And then that supportive environment, you know that you're sending them to a place where they can learn and the learning is, is supportive. So when we look at those, then what really, what really drives the supportive environment? From our data, it's ambitious instruction. Allowing students to engage with their learning and their, and their content in different ways that matter to them. That's the most, and it is eclipses the, the next closest essential, which is effective leaders. It's not even close. So that is powerful, I think. That's a powerful insight in thinking about, in the context of the conversation of best-first instruction. Getting students into the building and having that best-first tier-one instruction that engages and hooks students where they, where they come into the building, absolutely the correct strategy to be on. It's a triangulation around, we're, we're on the right track and now growing into, how, how do we do that? The actions are the next important step. Then you can see effective leaders and collaborative teachers. And then students are much more likely to meet school, meet growth in schools with, using ambitious instruction.
I just want to say that seeing this, I'm really glad RU dip, we went back and really highlighted family engagement. I mean, it's just, I'm glad we did that.
Yeah, I agree. And really operationalized it much more.
Yeah.
The key piece of this and other studies outside of University of Chicago is that two-way communication. So not waiting until there's a problem to engage with communication, but doing it proactively. But then also learning from families. So we generally are, if, if we communicate well, it's generally one way. Here's some information for you, here's some information for you, which is great. But we also need to find ways to engage in that two-way communication. So then finally, just.
And just one last point, going back to that, that five essentials that you talked about.
Yeah.
Some schools are on the higher end and other schools are on the lower end. If you can look at that data and you know which schools are on the lower end, if you can pass that information along to the area superintendent so they can then connect with the schools that are at the lower participation range before the now, the twenty-third deadline. And you guys can, like if Carver has low participation, then you can reach out to the Carver community through the principal.
Yeah.
Push that survey. I think just giving.
I owe you an email, because I actually disaggregated that. I don't think I got around to sending it to you. So it'll be the first thing in your inbox.
We talked about the data and executive cabinet, and they put together a plan in place for area superintendent. We talked about the data and executive cabinet and they put together a plan in place for area superintendents to go ahead and follow up on that for exactly what you were just saying.
Yeah.
And that's the email that David's talking about, providing them the information so they can do that follow-up.
Thank you.
In process.
Can you, can you comment, um, let me see, um, go, go up one? And so can you comment on school commitment? Is that from the parents, from the teachers, what is school commitment?
That is from the teacher, so that's a teacher answered item. And it kinda, it, it's aligned with collective responsibility. So school commitment is the degree to which a, a teacher feels like their school is on the same page towards the same goal and everyone is working towards that goal. Collective responsibility is that we all have responsibility for student learning. So we're working towards the same goal, but we all own responsibility. School commitment is just are we on the same page moving forward?
Would it be helpful, do you guys think for the future, if they put teacher answer or student answer? Would it be helpful, helpful in the future to ask for teacher answer, student answer to be listed next to these? Would you guys?
I'll be simple enough, I think it's.
Yeah.
Cause like some of these, I totally would have thought school commitment was like a parent answer. So if you just put, yeah.
Yeah, so it's interesting, that absolutely, yeah, we can easily do that.
Going forward.
None of these, none of the fi- the core five essential survey that we give in January, uh, they're all teacher or student. There's no administrator, there's no family. So even the family is the perception of the teacher as to the role of the family. That's why we adopted the family survey, cuz this, the family survey is from the perspective of the family. But great, great point, yeah. Alright, and then I'll wrap, wrap this up with our district and school processes. So we are creating a culture now of really examining all of our major strategies. So examining them in the sense of, um, how are they being implemented? How are they being adopted and how are they being used? And then back to multiple data points, when they're being used at a particular threshold, what, what effect do we see on our academic data? So some of these that are really coming forward is our best first instruction, we work with Carol Gates. So you worked with McCrell closely, so we're actually aligning ours, our evaluation strategy with McCrell's. And it's gonna be a very powerful thing. You saw this with the summer, with the summer bridge, that type of evaluation, um, implementation kind of strategy. And then the new benchmark assessment system, we're in the process of running these same. So being self-reflective of all of our major initiatives to learn how is the end user experiencing it and what changes do we need to make for future training, for engagement, and different things of that nature. So really being reflective of our own processes. Now, when you, again, when you layer all these on top of each other, we can really start to get to some interesting, interesting conversations. And so with that, if there aren't any other questions, and again, I do apologize for the hiccup with the enrollment data. And then, yeah, like I said, uh, probably by end of week or definitely early next week, you should have an update coming to you about, uh, results.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, great, so we'll go into the next part, um, uh, looking at One Plan, um, trends. In the future, we'll have, um, data on trends with learning walks as well. Right now, we're focusing on One Plan, cuz that's the data we have right now with our, um, major focus there. Um, there are two slides, um, in this part, so there's two strengths and opportunities slides for One Plan check-in meetings. The first one is on the general process, um, uh, that, um, has been led by Natasha Kraus um, in David's department. Um, uh, and, um, you can see the strengths and opportunities there that were posted. They are very, um, they have similarities to, um, the next slide, which is, um, uh, the process that we've started, um, for these continuous improvement cycles, One Plan check-ins for priority schools. This is our work and, um, uh, the schools mentioned this tonight that we're sharing out. Um, this is our work to differentiate more, um, and really with that process and really to go deep in the data and ensure that, that we're gonna have, um, change in results. Um, and so with that, I'll pull out, since they are very similar, but just some of the differences. Some of the opportunities we've been seeing, um, coming out of the priority school improvements, um, related to the conversation earlier, um, that, uh, the shifts from remedial efforts to an emphasis on stronger tier-one instruction. That is really important, um, because again, we can't ensure that kids are gonna actually, um, perform competent, uh, you know, have competency in grade level standards if they're not giving access to them, if we only focus on remediation. Um, the other thing is, um, that top bullet in opportunities, um, ensuring that school leaders have more and better resources, um, for coaching necessary to plan for learning. Again, specifically in grade level and above content. Um, and then that last bullet across, um, both check-ins, P L Cs. Um, they're the primary vehicle. At, this is, while there's been some training on P L Cs before, this is literally the first year that we're having school-wide, district-wide implementation. It's a huge shift. Um, and then particularly for our priority schools, we've gotta make sure that we have that weekly, um, instruction and that we're using it to plan for core instruction and that schools are able to know how to do that well. We talked about that in the meeting that we had today. Um, so overall, district supports and, um, actions that we're taking based on the trends we're seeing from the One Plan meetings are in content-focused planning, our One Plan continuous improvement cycles, and then supports for students with additional learning needs. So with content-focused planning, um, we're working to improve, um, and add on to our processes and resources. I'll give an example for that. Um, one of the resources that we've provided so far is an exemplar video, um, for, um, how a teacher, one of our T L Cs, walks through planning for learning, um, at the unit level and at the lesson level. So that we've already done in a K twelve meeting and we've done that and provided that with T L Cs. Um, what we need, um, in addition to that, is the more concrete resource that goes, um, that, uh, the written concrete protocol that, um, that, uh, T L Cs would use when they're planning with teachers and they're planning for units and they're planning for lessons. Um.
So the deepening understanding of the content and grade level expectations is for the teacher?
Yes, and for, for planning for those lessons at the unit level, so they understand what's, um, what standards we're covering. And then also at the lesson level, day by day. Um, for the One Plan continuous improvement cycles, what we're seeing, um, and what we needed to see happen, um, even in a greater level in priority schools, is, um, to get deeper into the data um, right away and then to have very, um, uh, to have action steps that could be monitored and followed up with. Um, so actually, we need, we need to ensure that across the system, but definitely for priority schools. Um, the support for students with additional learning leads, um, that goes with, um, some of the funding and investments and actually connected to fund balance, some of the things that we've identified there. Um, but what we're doing with our intervention programs like Dream Box, um, our tutoring that we've talked about, before and after-school programming, um, and then, um, the coaching and differentiation that we're providing with A I Cs and T L Cs and others.
Well, what is Dream Box again?
Dream Box is our, um, intervention, um, program in mathematics. It's an adaptive program, um, that students are able to go outside of the core curriculum.
Used to be D G, I don't know.
It used to be what?
D G, the little penguin?
Yeah.
Oh, with S G math probably, yeah, yeah.
So we just switched this year.
Yeah, I think this is, this is better. Yes.
We have Dream Box for math, what do we have for reading intervention?
Uh, reading across the board and I've, um, talked to, um, our, uh, Christie Feldman, who works specifically with literacy and also Carol, you know, um, who leads curriculum instruction. Uh, across the board, we have different resources for that. Um, and, uh, so, uh, and actually, it was brought up at our K twelve meeting today, um, and at the town hall. Um.
Amplify.
Amplify, yes, yeah. Um, so that is to be able to, uh, I, the way it's been explained and, and I understand, it's to match the resource with the needs of the school. Um, but we're gonna look into that further. Been looking into our overall plan for, um, uh, dyslexia and screening and, um, some of the resources that we have there. And so with that, wanna ensure that we have common, um, common intervention programs or at least a menu of those options that everybody's aware of and they know how and when to use them.
But right now, if I'm a middle school teacher and whether in special education or general education and my kid has additional learning needs, what do I go to? If it's math, it's obviously Dream Box. If it's English, language arts, it's, or reading, it's.
We don't have, uh, read three sixty anymore, right?
Yeah, that's something I, I think, I don't think we have it across the system.
Right, it's gone.
Yeah, yeah.
So these new programs, to answer your question, then these new programs are a compendium of, um, resources online that children, that, that teachers can use, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's various resources that schools are using at this time for interventions in literacy.
Can you tell me one so I can literally take it back to a teacher?
We don't use.
Who made this query?
I would just add my parent-teacher.
Yeah, we can get you the list of resources in schools and if you have a particular school, we can also tell you what we know to be available. Particularly within, um, our new district curriculum at the elementary level with wonders. There are specific pieces, um, for, uh, uh, phonemic awareness intervention that we would want teachers to go to first. Um, and some of the interventions, um, that we've used, like programs Hegarty and others, were supplemental based on the fact that we didn't have a core curriculum that was aligned to the science of reading. So we wanna go there first and then we do the supplemental. But it is a need to make sure that everybody knows how to use them and they know what the menu of resources are, that are available. Particularly at the secondary level that you're talking about with middle school, I had a question about that too. Um, and, and then when you get into high school, there's training of teachers, but I need to l- look into even further. Um, cuz typically at the secondary level, it's much harder for, uh, for, um, teachers to understand how to go back and build those foundations and, um, uh, a- a- and then also still provide access to grade level content. So that is something we need to go deeper in, direct drive, yes.
So when it comes to what I've been hearing, if it's not budgeted for, or if we go through that fund balance and some of those programs are embedded in there, we could easily cut those programs and the next thing I know, they're not able to continue with the reading programs that they've implemented. And it varies, it, it's so different from every building that nothing is consistent and everyone is pulling like resources that they know of that could work. Do you know what I mean? Like it just, it's not, I don't know how to explain it, I just know that there is this situation of, oh, well, we had this program earlier in the year, but the budget was cut, so we no longer can use it. But it was a great program, so we're gonna use something else, basically.
Yeah, one thing I will add to that, to provide.
Do you wanna let her answer that first?
Yeah, well, I, I'm just providing some context to you too.
Yeah.
The thing that was presented to the board when we got the new wonders curriculum was that alignment K through eight that wonders was going to provide.
Yes.
So we don't have different programs that different schools are going to be using. It's going to be wonders, K through eight, and we even provided that wonders in the budget for a couple of schools that were not using wonders and were using a different program. And under wonders.
Yes.
And under wonders, and I could be wrong about this now, when my daughter was going through the kindergarten, the elementary school, wonders as differentiated books for instruction for, uh, if you fall into the SPED category, if you fall into the G T category. So, uh, the same material that is presented to read for G T students, there is a little bit more rigor in the questions that are asked out of the package and the E L L students have different. That's my thought on it.
Yes.
I don't know if you'd like that or not.
Yes, I, um, absolutely. And i- in literacy, so everything that you're speaking to, President Malkapakam, is, is why, um, why there was a need for, um, our district-wide core curriculum. And really, that's where you want to focus your efforts. And in literacy specifically, there is natural differentiation and, um, groupings, uh, by level of, of reading to address those needs. So that's where you wanna put your energy. Um, Carol, our, you know, Carol Gates, our, uh, uh, director of curriculum. She, um, exactly what you were talking about in terms of multiple programs, that actually, there was some of the cleanup we needed to do with interventions. It actually was getting us farther off students being on grade level. So that's why it's important to start with the base of core curriculum is, i- i- in math and literacy, but particularly in literacy. Um, and then it, you can decide, we can use, um, some intervention programs, but you need to be, um, careful about that. You can go to the district website, you can look at intervention programs, middle school is, is, um, provided for on that. Um, Carol te- was texting me on that as well. That's what, uh, they brought over here, there's a whole menu overview of options. It's not where we'd wanna go to right away. Um, but we would wanna help support schools in being able to use those, there are, there are some, there is some programming for that.
Yeah, I just wanna jump in on the idea of interventions and, cuz it's a constant source of conversation on best first instruction. Uh, we do not not believe, I would never use a double negative, we strong, we believe strongly in the need for interventions. But we have found over time, particularly Tamara and I having been in several different systems, that the bar has lowered to the ability or the definition of the intervention. And so the intervention is best when it is defined after first setting the expectation of your best first instruction is the language that we would use. Then you can get the specificity of the intervention. When the intervention becomes the strategy of the whole, you've lost the opportunity to get to grade level. Cuz now you're teaching to the inability to get there. And so our theory of action is if we raise the bar, and not just on student expectation, this is raising the bar on adult expectation. If you raise the bar on the planning to get to the engagement, to get to the rigor of the higher-order questioning, then you'll be able to define the specificity of the intervention needed. Instead of intervention for all as a strategy, we want speed, fidelity, and specificity, or intentionality, whatever was the other one I used, in the intervention. And the system, not District Eleven, this is not a statement on District Eleven, the system of children failing to meet expectations has fallen backwards on its heels that says, kids are three years behind, so I have to start three years behind. We're never gonna get kids where they need to get to if we keep starting at the lowest common denominator. My life lessons, and I bring in a myriad of different experiences, is every time I set a higher expectation, it's much easier for me to resource the skill gap one for the people that didn't get there. I know that everybody's not gonna get there, but instead of saying, I gotta start where everybody is at the lowest point, then I lose the ability to ever get people there. There's just not enough time. After-school's not enough time, summer bridge is not enough time. We have to have a partnership in the workload between the student, the teacher, and the community, which is an extension of the family, that raises the bar in the expectation. Our children will achieve. I have seen it before, we will see it again. Yes, our children are different than children I see in Detroit, Oakland, and D C, but the problems between all three of those cities are exactly the same. If adults don't believe that we can win, kids are never gonna win. Our conversation on intervention is not that we are not for intervention. It's just that the first thing we say is about the expectation. And when we realize that we can't get there, we will be hyper-specific on the intervention to get there.
Yeah, and, and it's why it's the first bullet is really on contents, content-focused planning, planning for learning at grade level and showing, showing our, our staff how to do that effectively. Um, at the secondary level, we can start to look at things like double blocks and those sorts of things, but it's, it's for the purpose of accessing grade level content.
Can I just get clarity for myself? Because my understanding is Dream Box, all kids are doing Dream Box. So we're calling it an intervention, but I thought it was just more of like a tier-two uh, supplemental thing that kids are doing during class, like maybe small group breakout sessions. Like, it's not just for the kids that are behind, that are doing Dream Box or Amplify, which at parent-teacher conferences, the teachers told me. which at parent teacher conferences, the teachers told me, we love Amplify, then we were told we couldn't use it, but now they said we can use it, so.
Yeah, DreamBox is a tier-two intervention. You're correct with that. Um, it's to be used outside of core, um, uh, instruction.
But so all kids are using it, not just the kids that are behind.
They can use, students, all kids can use it and the school implements at the level to which they need to. Yeah.
Any of the area superintendents have any backstory with Amplify, the adaptive nature that they wanna come and comment?
I was gonna speak to DreamBox, but.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I Amplify came from last night. The DreamBox.
No, so DreamBox can absolutely be used for all students. We use it for acceleration. You can, teachers can set targeted lessons to groups of students or individual students. So that's one thing that we've been working on with our principals is to make sure that when we walk into a classroom and students are working on DreamBox, that the entire class is not working on the same activity. We should be aligning activities to the data.
According to the best.
According to what kids need. So like Tamara said, you'll see it a lot with our tier-two kids, but it can be used for all kids.
And depending on scheduling, depending on needs. Um, you have to be really careful. It's an adaptive assessment. So we do want to do exactly what you're talking about. We wanna match to needs. But we also wanna make sure that we're not preventing students from growing by having them focus in certain areas and not allowing them to use the adaptive nature of the assessment.
Yeah, I got you. I think I was just getting caught up on the word intervention. Cause in my mind, my mind, I was trying to catch kids up, but I'm like, but all kids are using it, but.
Yeah, and inter- intervention can be used both ways, yeah.
Is DreamBox only at the elementary level or middle school students use it? Middle school students?
It'll go up to geometry.
Key three.
It goes through.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So that, those are the trends, um, based on the One Plans. Um, we're gonna go into now the District One Plan, uh, our District Unified Improvement Plan, action steps, and, um, where we're at on progress. I'm not, I'm, and, and this is for our major improvement strategy of best-first instruction, so connecting the dots there. I'll remind us that for best-first instruction, we're working on coherence in core instruction in Tier One, um, and we're focusing on two areas. Systems, where we're talking about cascading professional learning, One Plan, um, continuous improvement cycles, and developing those systems for support and accountability. And then the other area in content-specific professional learning with our focus being early literacy, K-12 mathematics, and high school competencies. This, um, I'm not going to go through every action step that was provided ahead of time. It was posted on Board Docs. I've highlighted a few that I'll go into, mainly the in-progress or partially in-progress areas to pull up and lift up for conversation. But the main point is, you can see, we are monitoring ourselves with, are we sticking true to what we've said we are gonna do with our plan? And then what adjustments do we need to make based on how we're doing with those action steps? So here with cascading professional learning, we are in progress for professional learning communities, having those consistent professional learning communities in professional learning on that, in planning for learning. So we've seen, um, in the notes there that we have action, we've set some action steps in schools based on their plans. But central teams are working on developing, we're working on developing additional supports to implement that based on the need that we're seeing coming out of those One Plans. So needing to provide more professional learning and PLCs, both at the school and district level. Again, in cascading professional learning, we're partially on track for collaborative planning and coaching cycles. Our schools have shared feedback that there's a greater needs for support in this area and that's consistent with what I was talking to you about earlier. For uh.
Can I please go back? I have a question on that last one.
Yes.
On actually the one that you didn't highlight. It says that some schools have planned and delivered site-specific follow-up, but others have not found the time to complete. So is there kind of a push of a timeframe of, we want you to do this by a certain time? And for the ones that haven't?
Yeah, that, that gets into our system of support with our networks and our area superintendents. So they're each individually working with schools coming off of professional learning on, uh, on what we've asked them to do and to follow up. Um, with Schoology models, with implementing assessments.
So as, as the board comes and visits a One Plan review and we've been asked and invited, we'll make sure that we bring the tracking tool that I talked to, mentioned earlier to Director Bankus. Cause that's a great way for you to see how we are setting differentiated expectations for schools with still a minimum goal, and everybody's gonna get through that. Some schools already demonstrate these practices. I have seen many of them in spotlights. Some of those schools we have allowed to accelerate to customize the standardized pieces that we're pushing out to say, what are the needs at Bristol? And so I gave as an example of that, came up and said, hey, I saw some of the stuff that we're posting on Schoology. Are you okay if Bristol does X, Y, and Z? Absolutely, we're okay with that. They're beating their enrollment, their achievement's on the rise. They're very innovative. We are not trying to tell people what to do. We are trying to give people tools to create the path for them to be successful. But we will hold them accountable if they ignore the tools and are unable to create that, that own success.
Just a note with that, that great tool, uh, Nepal Atmer has helped support that. But Carol Gates brought that to us. She actually, um, uh, worked with somebody to develop that tool. It was something that she had wanted to develop for a long time, even back when she worked with the state, and it's, it's fabulous.
Maybe it is.
Yeah.
Hey, Carol Gates, if you're watching.
Yes, she is, yeah. Okay, um, with One Plan Continuous Improvement Cycles, partially on track for planning and clearly articulate a predictable, responsible cycle to engage in One Plan check-ins at each school. So what we've seen is, is that One Plan check-ins are occurring and they're being implemented and we're iterating on that model. So we're observing them and giving feedback with some of the trends that I just went over and how we're adjusting. Really needing to ensure that we have follow-up action steps and that we're going into data. And we'll be able to do that even more as we're having a second round of data and a second data point with our STAR on Renaissance data.
So with this One Plan check-in.
Yes.
I know that we place a lot of emphasis on the priority improvement on our schools, but are we also doing it at some of our other improvement schools and performance schools too? Just to make sure that they are.
Every, yeah, um, let me make sure I'm answering your question right. But every school is participating in One Plan check-in meetings. The difference is we are, uh, more fre- more frequently meeting and checking in with our priority schools and the process is more intense. The process we've revamped based on work and, and actually some training from work that I've done in previous roles that we've seen to be proven with turning around schools. And so like the processes for checking in with them from research that was done. So we've used, we are using that process with priority schools and it's much more frequent. But all schools are, are participating in the process.
Thank you.
What does using systemic implications to inform spring twenty twenty-three mean? On the, um.
Yes, on the second one that I didn't highlight. Yes. Okay, so that one's with the action step of plan and facilitate a spring One Plan Symposium. Okay, we said NA for this because we already had the One Plan Symposium, but that using systemic implications to inform spring of twenty twenty-three, we already see that we're gonna need to make changes to the One Plan Symposium based on what we saw with the plans that were developed. So it was a great, uh, uh, entry, um, step into strategic planning as an overall district. We saw some great things with that. We've got common major improvement strategies and best-first instruction. But what, um, what we've seen and what I've, I've seen specifically is that we, um, we didn't have the level of detail that we would wanna have in the spring on those plans. So we need to make some systemic change, we need to make some changes based on that feedback across the board to that, to have it be even more intensive, maybe a little longer symposium and to have more detail put in the plan and potentially align to budget as well, um, school budget there. Yeah, yeah. So thanks for that question.
Traditional question then. When it says NA, and this was a question I had, is, does that mean the One Plan Symposium is going away?
No, it just means NA for this point. Like it's not something we're working on right now at this point in the year. All right, yeah.
Cause, yeah, my concern is just like, well, does that mean?
I know, somebody else asked that question too. So it's, it perfectly makes sense. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's always really important, cause I know we're introducing a lot of new ideas, but these all build off of the framework that the board and the previous administrations have committed to in the One Plan. The One Plan is the centerpiece that's allowing us to accelerate as quickly as we are. And I know that people are running as fast as they can to keep up with the drive that we're bringing into the district. It's the One Plan that gives us the chance to go that fast. Without the One Plan and the Symposium in place, we're two, three years behind. Where we actually have to say, we should be reflecting on the work that we did this year. You all are in door, the board members before you and the administrators and principals and part of the system, get that credit. What we're doing is we're taking that. This is, this is part of this design thinking process that we wanna bring into the district. This is a spiral of how you, instead of just going around in a loop over and over again, what's good about the One Plan Symposium? We have building leaders with their coaches and key, and key teachers, review and community members reviewing the quality of how they stayed to their plan. Now what we're doing is saying, we think we need more fidelity on that. So we're spiraling up last year's good plan and we just have to make sure that we don't project that we're leaving that behind. What was the first version of the One Plan Symposium is not what it will look like next year and it certainly won't what it'll look like in two or three years. It will be much more interactive, it'll be much more reflective of what we have learned over the course of time. Right now, it's a seminal event. It is the event. You heard, if you were at the town hall last night, I said, if you're a pathway school, you should be meeting at least a half a day longer in your One Plan Symposium. You heard Tara say it. I got three things and I gotta deal with this art thing. And you should be coming back a day earlier than a non-pathway school. Cause we're asking you to do more. To do more, you have to have more time. We have had this conversation about time. We know that we need to sit at the negotiating table and say that if we wanna be different and we want to do things differently, we have to have access for more time. The board has graciously and appropriately paid for that time. But it's, and if you watch the news, in LAUSD, Alberto Calvara said that I wanna pay extra time for teachers to take on these days that were scheduled to be off and we're gonna make them tutoring days. And the union voted against that. Said, I'm gonna pay you for more time. And they said, well, we didn't negotiate on that. We need to just get beyond all of that noise and say, we agree with the plan and a little tweak. We need more time with our teachers, we need more time for our principals to be with their communities to get the plans in action.
Yeah.
Good thing we're not California.
Good thing we're not California.
Yeah, um, and.
I've been saying that all day.
Yeah, and, and the, the One Plan Symposium, great work there. And it really did allow us to be able to leverage pieces and move forward. And you can see, like, we're learning as we're doing the USIPS, right? And the, the, the not match between what you're seeing in the paper version versus like the most up-to-date version in the PowerPoints, right? We wanna get farther and deeper in the spring, um, and then you can start to see those things align more. But it means we're not waiting as a system to make the improvements we need to make. We're doing it right now. And so that's why you're seeing a lag in some of those processes. And that's why we're looking at these things and the actions to decide how are we gonna change and adjust as we move forward.
Well, it makes sense that we would see it grow and that we're learning as every year we do it. I mean, that's feedback for the team that are working on the USIPS. I mean, I personally, it's very apparent that you guys are growing over these last several weeks in what is coming to us with the USIPS. So just know that. Like, I see how it's developing and you guys are just really narrowing in and fine-tuning and it's great.
Yeah, and, and tremendous shout-out to our area superintendents who have really been working with their leaders across the board as on all of this as well. And I'm not saying that just because we're all sitting behind you.
They're a great group to have sitting behind you. I think, I just wanna mention that for a second. So like, when, when we talk about levers of change, it doesn't mean that other people don't have capacity to deliver that lever of change. I wish that I could personally know all fifty principals and get them to be the lever of change. I really wish that I could get to know eighteen hundred teachers individually and be able to resource them specifically. Cause if you look really deeply into our strategy, it is about the teacher-to-student relationship. And so there's all this talk about, are we for the union, are we against the union? We are so pro-teacher that it keeps me up at night, that I don't understand why that comes into the space. The lever of change this year has been the area superintendents. Because my SWOT analysis when I got here was, there are four, now five, people who are steeped in deep in what it takes to run schools and have administrative experience to understand how you resource and source that over time. And so that was the main strategy was, get the resources to the area superintendents. Don't have them be observational, have them be actionable. And that's where they are right now. And now what you're seeing is the actions and the tools that we're giving them are even better. And so now we're running computer diagnostics on the car instead of just tuning with a flathead on the, on the carburetor in the garage. We're getting to a place that we will see massive amounts of acceleration, particularly for the schools that are built to be onboard. Some schools are still not onboard. There is hesitation within our own system. I'm a, well, Tara said it, she said, I'm a lot. That's my bumper sticker. I know I'm a lot. And so there are people that are kinda going, oh, I don't really know, right? And so that's when I give, cause they know them, they trust them. And Sherry's not here, I hear you there, Sherry. You're just so right behind Julie there. And the principals know the area superintendents. And so when I see that I'm too much or they don't understand Tamara because her experiences are different, boom, that's the lever. That's why the One Plan becomes perfect, cause the One Plan is built around how the Edsels used to sit with the principals. Now they're not sitting with the principals, they're literally coaching and sourcing and resourcing and refining the work that happens. So just that shout-out to the area superintendents is critical. They are a representation of the classroom at a space that we can manage it from central office. We will get to a space in ten years where we are managing classrooms. The data is, is available. We just don't know how to do it yet. We don't know how to have a Bitcoin against a teacher in an LMS to say, Jason learned two plus two today, don't ever ask Jason two plus two again. Move him up to two-digit addition tomorrow. Education is the last industry to really adopt the power of technology. And that's because we're so relationship-based that we're afraid the technology's gonna replace the relationship. It's never meant to do that. It's just meant to augment it. We can get ourselves, that's a ten-year vision. You're, you're my Bitcoin project.
Next RP.
Yep.
I'll give you a Bitcoin.
And so the highlighted partially on track here, action step, in One Plan Continuous Improvement Cycles, complete follow-up action steps developed during One Plan check-ins and monitor student data. Partially on track, because we're working to, one, make sure that we have those very concrete action steps that we're using data and that we're, that our area superintendents are able to then follow up and, and make sure that those are, and support the implementation of those. Okay, um, moving into systems of support and accountability. Highlighting here, um, the, uh, supporting the implementation of our district benchmark STAR. We're really new with it. We're learning, we're learning it. And, um, so we're, we're partially on track as we're, we're getting to learn it, learn about it and learn how to utilize it even more. So initial benchmark assessments have been given. And what we've decided to do, we've moved into priority schools having, uh, starting progress monitoring reports in, within the assessment. So that's started. And then we'll have the middle-of-the-year assessment window open in November. So progress monitoring in priority schools, it doesn't mean all schools can't do that. For sure, we're doing that there. So progress monitoring in priority schools, it doesn't mean all schools can't do that, for sure we're doing that there um with those reports. Um also, um again, planning and implementing systems to monitor student outcome data aligned with our quarterly learning guides that the um schools were talking about um today um as well um and STAR assessments. Um so we're we're um partially-on-track for that. At today's meeting and actually one of um one or both of the uh principals today spoke about it. Oh, I think it was Tara who talked about, oh, we had this a great um training on the assessments. Um that's that's where we um started that work. We'd started with um with um looking at all of the reports. There was a training given by the consultants with STAR um in conjunction with um our Ed Insights team um that went over all of the options. And what we found is that we really need to narrow in and hone in and provide more direction to what are the major reports that schools should be using. So that's what we did at the meeting today. Um the standards master report and the instructional um uh classroom grouping uh report. Not saying the exact right title. Um and then we had one other report that we gave as an option. Um uh and schools were excited about it. This is uh just hearing anecdotally some of the feedback is um um getting better and better with um alignment of those meetings and the resources that we're providing there. Um but we'll continue to align that to that scope and sequence, the quarterly um learning uh guides and targets um so that we can monitor um progress and we can help schools monitor progress as well. Okay, moving into content, um specific professional learning.
Let's just give a couple of real quick take-throughs. Um we're at eight thirty and.
Yes, um this uh we have provided, I I added partially-on-track. This is the difference you'll see on what was posted on board docs, but now I guess it's all correct. Um I added um partially-on-track here uh uh one way, it said we were on track because we have been giving clear next steps. But that piece that Director Bankus uh called out was so crucial, the observable evidence, to provide observable evidence of content-specific strategies. We need to get even better and more concrete there. So while we've done some of that, uh we're not we're not quite there with where what we need to be. Um an example I gave earlier with that is we have the videos, right, for um what it would look like for unit planning and lesson planning and now we need the concrete protocol for what you would go in to observe for those planning sessions and how you would do it.
Question on the right-hand side there in the highlighted section, the last sentence is each K twelve ends with one page next up, guys, for all leaders. What each K twelve ends?
That's our meeting.
Um each K twelve meeting.
Okay.
That's our monthly meeting with the principals.
Yeah, which we just had today. It's our collaborative meeting, but we've had three of them now, right? Yep. This is the third one today. So they leave with, here's um here's what we're gonna work on. Here's the support um with from the area superintendents um that we can come back to. Okay. Um uh we need to continue um uh partially-on-track for that support for planning for learning. Um and this is uh using those dial-in supports better. So our teams, um our area instructional coaches, um we're working to provide them even more um training um and support. Um we've started that so they can um help support um schools and areas better. Oh, that's it?
That's a lot.
There's a lot. There's a lot more. Go back and read.
You guys have them sleep sometime, right?
Wow.
I hope so.
Not until the children are prepared for the life that is in front of them.
This is excellent. I mean, it just is really nice to have this picture of where we're at and all of the different aspects. Thank you for putting it here. I don't know if this is new or this is done every year. It's new to me, but um.
It's new to me.
Okay, I mean, it's awesome.
And that coherence really does pull it all together, that whole framework of making sure. Cuz I have to say, when we began, it was like here and here and and you couldn't wrap your head, I couldn't wrap my head around it. This puts it all in a place. So thank you. I love you.
Yeah, and that uh I would just say that coherence across systems, we we are tired today cuz we had like this this group of um of meetings, but it's it's pretty cool to go from a principal meeting to a central meeting to a board meeting and be covering similar um content and being on the same page, at least be able to have those conversations. Uh the conversation may change a little, um uh which it should, but that common language and the common focus of what we're working on, no matter what your role in the system, is so key and yeah.
Nice. Just make sure we're all heading in the same direction.
When you put that all together with that Venn diagram, which has got that four pieces and uh by the way, that's kind of the most complex Venn diagram I've seen.
Yes.
But the intersection that comes right in the middle, uh that's what we are aiming towards. So um uh and like, you know, seconding what Director Nelson said, the focus and the uh details that you shared with us, that's uh now if we do it with the urgency, the intentionality and.
I think I said speed, fidelity and intentionality was the original.
If we do it, I think we can turn around some of these priority improvement schools. And hopefully the boards uh, you know, going forth, doesn't have to listen to PPI and turn around school improvement.
It's absolutely the goal. Yeah, but I will say, people need sleep to have fidelity, so.
Yes.
Yes, we see you.
We we do A B shifts.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions on this topic? Thank you guys for all the work that you did. Okay, do you wanna close it out? Any thoughts on this?
No, I just appreciate everybody's uh uh conversation. This is what we wanted. Was for you to all see the depths of the work and the direction that we're headed. Such that when we get to those hard spaces, we all have the same ground.
Great, perfect. So uh just for the board, we have five more schools that we have left to listen to get that feedback on their school improvement plans. And that will happen maybe a couple next week and then we have the board work session on eleven sixteen and we'll have a board special meeting on uh November thirtieth. Between those, by November thirtieth. Okay, November thirtieth is the fifth Wednesday. Uh I don't think it's called out right now as a board meeting day, but we will have to use that considering we also have uh some charter school applications to consider. And and those will come at the end of the month, beginning on November thirtieth.
Gotcha.
Okay, so November twenty-third is the Thanksgiving week. We won't have anything at all that week. So it's the following week, uh November thirtieth that we have. So uh with that, if there are no further questions.
I just, I wanna mention, I know that, you know, you're, we're trying as a district and our superintendents are working with principals to get things to us. But we have got to get ahead of the game so that we are not get, in my opinion, maybe the board doesn't share this, but to get several versions of the documents. And then thank goodness for the updates of, well, here's what we changed because otherwise we're left to wonder and reread. Um and we have a staff person who has to, at the very last minute, I'm guessing, adapt as well. And it triples, doubles or triples her workload. So out of consideration to volunteers, us, the public who might wanna read ahead, staff who might wanna be on just weighing in with us, I think it would be a good idea to be ahead, get the cabinet meetings, get these two cabinet meetings a week ahead or whatever it's gonna take so that we can have them posted on Friday and have a weekend because some people are working full-time as well. And if we have a busy few days, for those of us who aren't working full-time, or you, especially little people, um it's it's a lot to do.
And so that's on me, it's not on the staff. We will meet Friday expectations. Uh we continually dialogue with the board president and so some of the shifts in the UUSIPS over the next five schools are continuing to shift, not because of our inability to get them done by Friday, but because of desires by the board as well. So it is a it is a two-way street, but that's cuz we're all moving very quickly. We will meet Friday expectations. If it's not met by Friday, I'll pull it off the agenda. So that'll it'll be as simple as that. But what what I'm not gonna do is I'm not gonna, yeah, that that'll be my statement. If we can't meet by Friday, it won't be on the agenda. And if that means it's not ready by Friday and we have to cancel a whole meeting, we'll cancel the meeting. It's not fair to ask the board to be managing multiple versions. Friday is manageable from our end and we'll meet it on our end. And if we can't meet it, then we'll pull it from the agenda.
Yeah, I've had that conversation with Superintendent Call to and uh with the speed that they are moving at and with the innovation that they are bringing into. And the conversation also was that once the team understands his expectations, this will change going a- after the Christmas break. So uh because of that, I understand, you know, the board is used to getting some of this information. I was also looking at providing some grace to the staff. They are working really hard to get this information together that maybe going in January, the expectation would be that on Friday you can do it.
We will meet Friday going forward. We got it.
Sure.
Yeah, I I think, can I give one like quick example related to that cuz I totally agree. I um it's a balance, right? Like one of the things that is so cool that I just have to say like from this process is like we're, and it's not perfect, but like this, the collaboration between assessment and curriculum instruction, some of these things are the first time. Like I, you know, David's been here three years now, so not as long as like some. But like some of these things are the first time, collaboration takes time. At the same time that you're implementing a new assessment, right? So you've got CNI and and the instructional house over here saying, hey, I want the assessments, like we need STAR to be able to pull out the math trends, right? We were meeting up to like to try to get those math trends, like when I talked about um we couldn't get a report um and we had to discover that, we couldn't get a report for math trends. We, so we were meeting even up in the last week, trying to figure out what can we do? And is um team members saying, well, we could look at the seventeen schools, let's see how quickly, we have to get it for the Friday day, right? Like so absolutely want to do that. And I I just wanna give you some of the the great things that are coming with learning from that, which are contributing that from the conversation that, you know, from what you just said there.
I'm glad to hear that those silos are breaking down. That's what like we've been talking about. Every department is kinda in its own silos. To get that cross-functionality will be the big thing.
Well, I'll just add that part of the change happened because, like you said, it was a board's request, but it was because we didn't wanna have to look at seven schools and three charter schools in December. So I mean, and that is like, I know you guys are talking about the future coming weeks and planning the agenda, but I mean, I second Julie's comments that um and also because of you all. I imagine it's very stressful doing last-minute things, so we'll get there, we'll get there.
They're not last minute. It's not that we're procrastinating. We're just creating so quickly and accelerating. We literally briefed this to principals today and it informed what we wanted to talk to the board. I wish that none of the board schedule was established and that we first established which schools needed and then built a board schedule after that. That's just not how it works. You all are the governance of the system. We're trying to find that balance. Fridays is my obligation to you. If it's not ready by Friday, I'll pull it. There will be other meetings.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned at eight forty-five, forty-six P M.